Being after six and I'm calling the meeting to order. And let me see. Denny Klein, would you lead us in the pledge?
Please join me in honoring the greatest country on the face of the earth. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please, please remain standing, we're having an invocation.
Would you join me in prayer, please? Father, we thank you for tonight, we thank you for the great men and women that represent this country as well as this great city. We thank you for giving us wisdom and knowledge and the love that will continue to allow this great country and this great community to grow. Thank you for our first responders, thank you for those that have served in military. And then Father, give us wisdom to make decisions as we seek your guidance in all of your affairs that will affect the people of this great community. We pray in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Please be seated. City Attorney's Report.
Thank you. The City Council met in closed session to discuss local agency real property negotiations, a negotiation for sale of various Ridgecrest business park lots as set forth in the agenda. The agency negotiators are Program Manager Kerry Parsons and City Manager Demis Sphir. No action was taken.
Thank you, sir. The next item is presentations, a presentation of a proclamation recognizing the month of February as Safe Surrender Baby Month. I had asked Mr. Sanders, Councilman Sanders, if he would make that proclamation, if we all would come down and join him?
So, we are celebrating the Safe Surrender Baby Awareness Month. Whereas the safely surrendered baby law was created in 2001 with the intent to save lives of newborn infants at risk of abandonment by encouraging parents or persons with lawful custody to safely surrender the infant within seventy-two hours of birth with no questions asked. And whereas the safety, and whereas since the safely surrendered babies laws inception, there have been fifty-five infants saved in Kern County and placed in loving homes. And whereas in Ridgecrest and throughout Kern County, a newborn baby can be safely surrendered into the hands of any hospital, emergency room, or fire station staff. And whereas the Safely Surrendered Baby Coalition, under the coordination of the Department of Human Services, works to educate Ridgecrest citizens and all Kern County residents about this important law. The coalition is made up of small groups of dedicated individuals representing a long list of agencies, nonprofits, hospitals, and stakeholders, including First Five Kern, the Kern County Fire Department, Bakersfield Fire Department, Bakersfield Police Department, Right to Life Kern Medical Center, Mercy and Memorial Hospitals, San Joaquin Community Hospital, and Clinica Sierra Vista, to name a few. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the City of Ridgecrest, the City Council of the City of Ridgecrest does hereby proclaim the month of February as Safely Surrendered Baby Awareness Month and encourages all Ridgecrest citizens to reach out and assist the Safely Surrendered Baby Coalition with their endeavors.
Thank you very much. Would you like to say something else?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I just want to thank members of the community for being here tonight and allowing us to do this presentation. Mayor Breeden and the entire Ridgecrest City Council, we really appreciate the opportunity to come and share this very important message with your community. It's, it's been our goal and our purpose to be as far-reaching as we can with a very small campaign that's funded with very little money that's on behalf of First Five Kern. But I do want to take just a moment to acknowledge the gentleman standing with me here today. And Kern County Fire Department is one of our most critical partners for the very specific reason that fire departments are located in virtually every neighborhood throughout Kern County. And that's critical because when a woman's in crisis and she needs the opportunity to surrender her baby, the firefighters are a location where those babies can be safely surrendered. And that means every neighborhood. And here in Ridgecrest, acknowledging Station 74 and 77 with Captains Nickel and Jacobs, Engineers Allen and Hayes, and firefighters Jones and Johnson, I'm not making that up. I just appreciate their time. I also want to acknowledge Ridgecrest Regional Hospital. The ER Director Melissa Parkinson was going to be here, but with the rain, maybe there's an emergency. So, we, Ridgecrest Regional is one of our partners as well as all the hospitals that have ERs throughout Kern County. And that's really important because the message is very simple. Within seventy-two hours, that's up to three days old, a woman can have a baby and in a crisis situation, walk into any fire station, walk into any emergency room, and place that baby into the hands of a caring firefighter, or a caring physician, or nurse, or someone on staff at an emergency room, and walk away with no questions asked. And that's critical because in that crisis situation, this is a choice between life and death. If a child is abandoned from exposure to the elements, or any, any kind of situation where their life is in danger, they could easily succumb and die. And in Kern County, we have seen that happen. We've had situations, as recently in Shafter, we've had situations even in Ridgecrest, it was ten years ago, baby Noel was surrendered on a doorstep of a church, but that baby lived. And every child that was safely surrendered, fifty-five babies, went into waiting adoptive homes, completing a wait for some of those families that could be months long, or sometimes years long, waiting for that opportunity to have a baby come into their home and be adopted. So it's not just an opportunity for that woman to get out of a crisis situation, it's an opportunity for that little three-day-old baby to have a future, and a loving future in an adoptive home. And so, that's, that's pretty much the law, but there's also the other part of the law. In that crisis situation, a woman might not be in her right mind. She might be in a situation where she feel like, feels like there's no support, but she has up to fourteen days to come back and say, "I, I really made a mistake. I really want to raise my child." And at that point, of course, Child Protective Services will be involved, will make sure that that family's safe for the baby to return. And that has happened in two of those fifty-five cases. So the law is real, it's out there, and, and I just share the sad news, you know, because the news of the day from West Covina was a baby being born in a, in a toilet in a Subway restaurant, and that woman walked away. And now she's facing charges of attempted homicide on a baby and abandonment. And that's not what we want for a woman in crisis. What we want is the opportunity for her to do the right thing, make the right decision, and put her child into a loving and waiting home. So again, I just thank you for allowing us this time and acknowledging again our partnership with Kern County Fire Department, with First Five Kern, again, who funds it, and Ridgecrest Regional Hospital out here in your area. So, thank you.
We thank you. (applause) And the next item is a presentation of lifesaving awards to members of the Ridgecrest Police Department. And Chief, I understand that you have that.
Sergeant Atkins and Officer Bakun, can you please join me down at the podium, please? Recently, I made the decision to start recognizing some of our officers in public for certain acts that they are involved in. One specifically is lifesaving awards. Every year, our officers are out in public, they run across situations where their actions directly result in the saving of someone's life, sometimes at the risk of their own. In the case I'm going to describe here is, is a similar situation. Last month, our officers were dispatched to a suicidal subject. When they arrived, they saw a subject standing at a window on a second story. When the officers approached, the subject jumped out the window, began to hang themselves. The officers came up, stood on a, on a air conditioner, attempted to lift the subject off the rope to release the slack, and the subject was fighting them. It took both officers to, you know, lift the subject up, they finally passed a knife up to a, a family member who cut the person down. If the officers hadn't been there and did the acts that they'd done, that person would have ended their life. So I think that they need to be recognized for their quick action and, you know, their efforts that they had in saving that person's life. So I have then, have tonight a, two certificates of lifesaving award with the ribbons that goes with it, one for Sergeant Atkins and the other for Officer Bakun. Madam Mayor, do we have any other items on the agenda before the public comment?
You're, you're next.
Okay. Y'all like to start off a public comment? I got a phone call from Sheriff Don Youngblood today, this afternoon, who stated that they had met today and decided to keep the jail open until July 1st. Now, the jail's still at risk.[794.23][794.23](applause) The jail is still at risk at closing July 1st. A lot of it has to do with still the budgetary issues of the county. You know, I'd like to thank Mayor Breeden, members of City Council, McGleeson, and the sheriff for having the public forum, the town hall meeting, to allow the citizens to express how they felt about the jail being closed, and also the significant impact they would have on public safety in this community that it, that it did. This reprieve will allow us time to play, plan for the closure if it does, or also give time for the Sheriff's Department of the County to find the funding to keep it open. So that was the news I wanted to get to you tonight before public comments, so if anybody had any concerns about it, we have that information out there at first. Thank you.
Thank you. Our thanks to all involved, the county, and to the police department and the sheriffs, thank you. Okay, the next item is a presentation of the Fiscal Year 2015 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report with the City of Ridgecrest. Ty?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of Council, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report is used to communicate the city's financial condition and activity in a transparent and organized manner. The reports present, the report presents historical and comparative information that can be useful to city staff, elected officials, and external users, such as debt rating agencies, businesses, other public agencies, and the city's residents. The most recent CAFR and several prior year reports are available on the city's finance website. As required, financial statements are prepared by the city and audited by independent auditors. The city's current independent auditor is Pooni Megidi LLP. Here to present to us tonight is Ken Poon, Managing Partner of Pooni Megidi. I'd like to turn the time over to him.
Thank you, Ty. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Again, my name is Ken Poon, and I'm the managing partner and the engagement partners of this particular engagement. So, we are engaged to perform the audit for the City of Ridgecrest for year-end June 30, 2015. So, let's go through the required, like, the standard presentation about these all require under the auditing standard that I have to communicate to you. So, the scope of work actually is including in the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Our main focus is actually in the financial sections. There's a lot of detailed information, especially in the current year, there is a lot of, as I, I've been constantly talking about the implementation of some new GASP pronouncement, this year you do have one big pension standard that is actually implement in the current year financial statement. So I'll go through those. So let's, the required communication is, let's talk about the audit responsibility. We also talk about some significant audit findings that we, we noted, any accounting policy change, disclosure, significant estimate made, any disagreement with management was, it's all included in this presentation. So let's go through the responsibility. As mentioned yourself, you are fully responsible for the financial statement by presenting the financial statement in accordance with generally accepted accounting principle in the United States of, of America. You also need to adopt sound accounting policy, establish and maintain proper internal control over financial reporting and compliance, providing evidence according to the amounts and the disclosure in the financial statement, and last but not least, to have control and programs to prevent and detect fraud. Our responsibility as an auditors is to perform the audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standard and the government auditing standard. We also need to communicate with you on certain things, which is include in this presentation, reassess the audit risk of internal control over fin, over financial reporting and compliance, determine the fairness presentation of the financial statement, and last but not least is to re, express our opinion on these financial statements. The audit result is a modified opinion, which spelled out the, the financial statement are fairly present in all material respect, significant accounting policy have been consistently applied, the estimates are reasonable, and the disclosure are properly reflected in the financial statement. There is no material misstatement or significance, significant deficiency when noted in internal control over financial reporting. That is great because we can rely on your internal control and perform a good, efficient audit. So, let's give you a brief overview of the financial position for the city as of June 30, 2015. This is the statement of net position. In another word, this is also what I call the balance sheet of the, the city as of June 30, 2015. So, at total asset, ninety-six million dollars, total liabilities of twenty-four point nine million dollars. And you can, you can see that this year you do have two new elements in these statement of net position. The deferred outflow of resources and the deferred inflow of resources. These two deferrals has to do with the new pension standard, and I can explain that in, in my later slides when I talk, get into the pension standard. So the net position is actually the, the net worth of the city, actually, as you can tell, you have total of sixty-nine million dollars in net position, of which fifty-seven point three million dollars is relating to your capital asset net of related debt. Close to ten million dollars is restricted, and then the two million dollars is actually for the unrestricted position, of which you can see, you see a, a big deficit of sixteen million dollars in the governmental activities, and also in the business-type activities, you have a eighteen point four million dollar surplus under, under the, the business-type activities. The next slide is the income statement of the, of the city as the whole. Twenty-one million dollars of expenses for the year, net of program revenue, it's about like fifteen point eight, six million dollars. The net cost of service is about close, for the whole entire city, is about like five point nine million dollars in deficit. The, the, not five point nine million dollars. So, general revenue, which includes all your property tax, sales tax, TOT, that's added up to about like, of, close to sixty million dollars, resulting a net change in net position, which is the, the, a big positive number, close to nine point seven million dollars for the current year. One of the ratio that I always talk about is the net cost of service compared to tax revenue for the governmental activities. This year, it is a great year, everything is under control, total net cost of service is about seven point three, total tax revenue earned during the year is about nine point five million dollars. So the cost of service to tax revenue is about seventy-seven percent, which is great for the city because you can actually building up some of your reserve that you don't have in the past. And this is what I'm going to get through this, is general fund. General fund is the jet, the main operating fund of the city. We take a really close look at the, the position, total asset, three point five million dollars, and total liability at, at June 30, 2015 was about four point five million dollars. The fund balance, you have a deficit of one, one million dollars. But this has changed quite a bit compared to the prior year because in the past, you actually do have a, a deficit of about like, in, in the past couple of years, there's a, a significant deficit because of a lawsuit between, a, a settlement between the wastewater fund and the, and the general fund to pay back the wastewater fund of about like four, four million dollars. So as of today, the, the liability's still out there, the fund balance, even though it's a negative, doesn't mean that you don't have cash out there. It's a fund balance, there's a long-term liability still sitting in the fund, that's why you still have a negative fund balance, as you can see in the, in general fund. Operating fund, this year you have a great year, total revenue is about like eleven point, point six mil, seven million dollars, net of expenditure of about like twelve million dollars, and some transferring of about like one point seven million dollars. So the net change in fund balance is actually increased by one point three million dollars.
Excuse me. I asked Ty, are you taking questions from us before or after?
It's up to you.
It's up to you. You're, you're giving it, you tell us. We'll either keep them or we'll interrupt. You tell us.
Why don't I finish up the presentation and then you can ask?
Thank you.
Yeah. So, the, the, the next slide is actually the, what I call the rainy fa, fun, rainy days funds ratio. As you can tell, you still have a, an assigned fund balance of a negative one million dollars. Total expenditure for the year is about like, about twelve million dollars, so you still have a negative no fund, like rainy days fund situation, but this number has been significantly improved in the last two years. The National Credit Agency and the GFOA has always recommend these numbers to be like between five, five percent to ten percent. Professional judgment, I highly recommend my clients is always keeping that numbers to be at twenty-five percent. That will be like a three months of expenditure that you should actually have in your rainy days fund reserve. So, but these fun, these number has been significantly improving the last couple of years. Okay? So, the next slide is the, is talking about the out-of-post employment benefit that you offer for the, for the employee and retirees. So, the last valuation was done as of June 30, 2013, told, you do set aside some money for your, in the irrevocable trust of about close to four hundred and fifty thousand, but the total liability, the actuarial liabilities for the, for all, all the benefit that you pay was about like nine hundred and sixty-one thousand. So there's an unfunded liability of five hundred and twelve thousand, so it's about, the funding ratio is about like forty-seven percent. And also keep that in mind, this unfunded liability has not been reflected on the face of the financial statement. The OPEP standard will be include, like, will be implemented in the year of two, 2018. So during that year, these number, whatever the numbers that, that will be done at that point, will be reflected on the balance sheet as a liability item, so.
Okay.
So for the current year, you'll say, there's a big implementation of pension standard, that's, we spend a significant amount of time in evaluating the, the numbers and also the disclosure in the financial statement, because that's at, on average, we add about like, like twelve pages of note disclosure just talking about the pensions. So, as a result of the implementation of GASP 68 and 71, there is some restatement. The restatement is not due to a, a correction suffered before, it is an implementation of an accounting standard that has some retro, retrospective effect on your beginning balance. So that's why there's like two items that we restated. One is the contribution made after the measurement date and the net pension liability. So as of, as you can see, there's like, we need to allocate between the, the three, three different activities, including the governmental activities, business-type activities, and the successive agencies. So we restated the governmental activities from forty million dollars to twenty-seven million dollars, the business-type activities from thirty-three million dollars to thirty-two million dollars, and even the successive agency from a deficit of five point eight million dollars to six point one million dollars. So there's a lot of changes at, in your beginning balance. For the current year, as you can, as I said earlier, there's a, some deferrals. Under the pension standard, there is, the, because of the timing difference between the valuation and the, and the fiscal year-end date, so whatever reported or, as a liability as of June 30, 2015, is actually based on a June 30, 2014 liability. So that's create a situation where the contribution made during the year in 2015 has not been netted in the liability to report the net amount. So according to the standard, tho, those amount will be reported as a deferred outflow of resources. In another word, I'll call it as a prepaid account to keep it in the, in the, on the balance sheet so that you, the, the future audit in your 2016 financial statement, that number will be netted against the net pension liability, will be used to net against the, the liabilities. Also because the city's in the, in the cost-sharing plan, so there is some differences between the actual contribution and your proportionate share of contribution of about twenty-one thousand dollars, also record as deferrals to be used in the future. Okay? So the current year, year impact, the, there is aggregate net pension liabilities reported of about like twelve point six million dollars, as you can tell, majority of your, your deficit in your, in your governmental activities actually because of the net pension liabilities reported on the, on the face of the financial statement. So, and, and the deferred inflow of resources, another, some, some other deferrals. This year, the, when they do the evaluation study, the actual valuation on the pension investments, there's a big investment earnings compared to the projected one. So that's why the differences between the actual and the projected investment earnings are also deferred in the future of, and to be amortized in five years so that they can smooth it out, so that it won't hit the, the pension expense will not be fluctuate as, as much as possible, so that they can smooth it out using a five-years amortization schedule. Also, because the city also have some other cost-sharing plan, so you, you can see on the deferred outflow resource, you do have a positive difference, and then in the deferred inflow resource, you have some negative difference of about like eighty-seven thousand. That also will be used in the future. So that's actually conclude my presentation, because that this year actually hit, the pension standard is one of the best. The, the pension standard is one of the big thing that we all have, um, all look at. Uh, because that is a big major impact to your, um, to your financial statement, so. And I'm more than happy to take any questions.
Counsel come in. None, you? Well, that's, well, that's one of the things that, we got this on Thursday, there's two hundred and fifty pages or so. Um, I have gone through maybe a third of them. I have a lot, lot of questions, but some I have that I want to see if they're resolved later on in the report. So I don't know the process of doing that. Can we ask and you come back and answer those questions? Do we go through Ty, how do we do that? But meanwhile, I know some of us have some now. How do we accomplish that? Cause quite frankly, I haven't even read it all and it's.
Yeah, yeah.
Two hundred and fifty, three hundred pages.
If you have questions right now, let's go ahead and ask them and any that we have to, um. If, if any come up later too, we can either correspond with email or if you wanted as a group, we can do that as well. Um, but I'll probably, I don't know that Mr. Poon will have time to come back up here some other time, but I can be in correspondence with him.
Okay, that was my concern, that I don't want to have an expense of having you come up here again. Quite frankly, unless you're going to come here for free because you're such a good guy. Or whether we're going to be able to get that opportunity to ask again, and I'd really like to see it.
You know what I can offer the city? Because obviously, uh, Silver Rich Chris is one of my, my, my long-term client here. So I'll, I'll offer to come back again for another session. Like you can ask me questions here today and then we can set up another time. Like we can gather all the questions and then we'll come back for, uh, another study sessions that we can, we can set that, that way.
Okay, I know you, you both started to ask questions before I interrupted, so go ahead.
I, I was just going to ask about the, the major concern or the strategy that you, and all these pages, cause I, I haven't read them either. But what is this, the strategy or the major concern that you see?
Well, the major concern is still your rainy days fund. Um, because like we, in case something happened, you're, you, you still have a, uh, some deficit. You don't even have any operating reserve. Um, so that is my major concern. But other than that, like you do have property internal control. Um, we can rely on your internal control. Cause when we actually assess the, uh, the internal control risk, we not, we are not only coming in and, and tackle the number. We actually look at financial reporting, look at the management operating style, the philosophy of running this up, um, the, the, the city here. We also look at the, uh, the cash collections, the expenses, payroll, how you actually evaluate your benefits side. Uh, because this year is an implementation of the pension standard, we actually take a lot of time focusing on the implementation. Making sure that all the disclosure and all the, um, all the, um, uh, numbers are properly reflected in the financial statement. So those are the things that we, we focus during the current year. Uh, one of the thing that I'm seeing, there is a significant improvement in your numbers, um, in the, for the fat, past couple of years. Because I remember three years ago, I have to issue a, what I go, call a going concern paragraph. Because at one point, you don't even have any money in, in, in the general fund. So that's why those are, those are the concern. Right now, I'm, I'm, I'm seeing the city is actually recovering. The money is actually start, uh, start coming in because of the, the, um, the, the tax measures. So actually it's trying to recover some of the, uh, the, the fund balance that you don't have before. And then also I see it, the, uh, the general funds start progressively, uh, pay, pay, pay off the, uh, the wastewater fund debt, long-term liability. Those also a good sign too, so. Hope I answer your questions.
Mike, did you have any?
I, I assume the major reason for the deficit is the sewer fund.
Is the sewer fund and also for the government Y level is because of the implementation of G A S B sixty-eight, the pension standard. Because it is the first time in U S history booking the unfunded liability on the face of the financial statement. So that's, that is the major impact that you see the sixteen million dollars deficit in your governmental funds, yep.
Okay, actually that was the one thing I was going to ask, is I wanted to understand the, the pension liability a little bit better.
Sure.
So, so that unfunded liability has always been there, we just, up till now, we just haven't had to put it on the financial statement, is that correct?
That's correct, because in the, in the past standard, uh, G A S B statement number twenty-seven, it's only a note disclosure only. Uh, there's not a lot of requirements to book it on the face of the financial statement. But G A S B actually realized that this is a true liability. Without that liabilities on the face of the, of the financial statement, the financial user may not have the full picture of the, of the city. So that's why now with the current standard, they've now put all the unfunded liabilities on the, on the financial statement.
Okay, so you have to forgive me, I'm, I'm not, you know.
Not a problem.
Minded for to be an accountant or anything, but, um. So how does, how does that work being an unfunded liability then? Is that something we need to fix or is that, uh, something that were planned? I mean, is, is a planned unfunded liability and what does that mean?
Well, the unfunded liability is actually a, uh, is the difference between the asset that you guys set aside. And then tell, uh, and then also the actuarial act, determine liability. Those are the difference between the two, okay? So what's going to happen is the, the liabilities, like I can tell, is always there. Cause there's not, not a lot of plan that is actually hundred percent funded. Uh, in the nation, probably from, at least in California, though what I see is between somewhere between seventy, seventy percent to eighty percent, that range. Um, some, I, I still see some fully funded because those, those entity, they, they do have a lot of money set aside.
And you said we're, we're at what percent funded?
Right now, let me, let me go back and take a look at it.
It was marked on one of your previous.
Was that the seventy-seven percent number?
Yeah, I thought that's.
Right now is close to about like, uh, seventy-nine percent for your miscellaneous plan and for a safety plan is about seventy-five percent.
Okay.
So you are right on range that, um, I'm seeing this is not at risk.
Okay.
Uh, because the, there's the liabilities, it's going to fluctuate because there's a lot of different factors. Uh, the, the investment during that, that year, are they doing good or bad? Because that has an impact to your contribution rate. Um, the, the second thing is the, uh, the mortality rate that they use. Um, because nowadays people live longer, so the liability is going to be much bigger. Because people live longer, you need to pay until they, they die, right? So that's why those, those are the couple of factors. So that's why the pen, unfunded pension liability, as long as you are within range between seventy to eighty-five percent. I still see this as a se- like a, 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 a good range.
Okay, thank you.
Lori? And I think you, you, well, you just answered one question that I had, which was the range. When you talked about the cost of net services and ours being the seventy-seven percent, just, uh, number one, where should that number be approximately recovering? And then the other is compared to other cities, where are we falling in that range as far as are we doing well? Are we tracking correctly or, or not?
Okay, for the current year, you guys are doing fabulous. Seventy-four, seven percent is actually, it's, it, you, you take a lot of control on cost. And also the, the revenue, the tax revenue actually coming in because of the, the, the tax measure that you guys have. That's why your number is right at seventy-seven percent. Uh, we did a survey every year, um, for about like a hundred and five ci- cities that we look at. That range is about like a hundred and nine percent. So basically every dollar that you, 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 um, the good, the, 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 the revenue that you collect, your, your cost is actually at a dollar and nine cents. But this, this one, the, the, you, you basically at seventy-seven cents on the dollar that you collect. So you're actually saving a lot of money. You're doing really, really good this year.
That's all I have for now, I want to finish going through, cause I haven't, thank you.
I too, I have a couple of questions. When you look at these unfunded pension mandates that we have to fund, when do we have to fund them? And how are we going to fund them if indeed they are so far out of balance? That I, as you pointed to, our, our people are getting older, they're, they're reliving longer. How do you fund something that you can't fund now? What's going to change?
Well, actually, G A S B, it does not have a mandate funding requirements. Um, but because you are partic- a, a participant of CalPERS, CalPERS actually every year they calculate the rate. So based on certain rate, like they, they, they keep looking at the mortality, mortality rate, looking at the investment. So basically every, every year they do a determination on the contribution rate, that's include two parts. One is the normal cost and then the other part is to fund your unfunded liabilities. So the normal cost is actually based on your current, but the thing was the unfunded liability portion. They will actually have increase if the, the investment is not doing good. Or maybe they determine the life, the, the, that portion is going to be greater. So CalPERS is actually closely looking at it, their act- the actuary is actually looking at these numbers every year. To factor the, the, the contribution, uh, like to factor the additional contribution in your contribution rate.
It seems like it's an un- unfulfillable prophecy.
Yep.
That we will never fund this. And, and the only way we're going to know is that everybody knows if, if they all live another ten years, they may not be funded. How does that happen? Now, CalPERS, I understand, is going to take it and pay for it, but we still owe it, do we not?
Yeah, you still owe it. Um, but the problem that, the, the best, the, the, the negative side of a defined benefit plan is actually you don't have the end, eh, end side. You don't know when it is going to be end. Compared to a defined contribution, okay, once I set aside, this is the amount that you can get. You, you get no more load, no less. It's all depending on, on, on your, on the, on the money that's set aside in the pool. But in a defined benefit plan, it's all an estimate and it's, it's a betting game. That's what I'm, I'm, I'm seeing in the defined benefit plan.
You give us, um, a very rosy projection and I'm, I'm feeling all the time I hear, we don't have money, we don't have money, we don't have money. But yet I hear we're doing better, we're doing, we're fulfilling expectations more fully. How, how did you come up that we're doing so good if we don't have money?
Well, it's not like you don't have money.
I, I understand, but we're not rich.
It is a very different, cause basically right now you're recovering. Cause with all the, 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 the new tax measures that you guys have, this year you actually did much better. Like additional two million dollars in surplus in your general fund. So that's actually helped in recovering what you had before.
To our reserves.
To your, is, yeah, to build up your reserve.
Yes.
Cause remember last year, your, your negative is huge. And every, like in the last couple of years, the, 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 the neg, like what I call the rainy days fund reserve actually is in a negative position. Even now is a negative position, but it's actually back to a single digit. In the past, you are in the fifteen percent, twenty-seven percent. At one point, there's like the, 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 you, you need to build it back up. So, uh, it takes a couple of years, um, to, to build up that reserve. And Ty can actually speak for the, uh, the, the plan on, on building back up the reserve, uh, in the near future.
What many people don't realize, when you look at a balance sheet, that's a snapshot. That's if all my liabilities were due today. That is obviously not the case, such as the wastewater fund, I think that's got another twenty-five years of payment. So obviously, we're not going to be paying the complete wastewater liability right now. But that's why you see it as a negative, is because we're a cap, if I had to pay everything today, this is what it would look like.
Right.
Basically Peggy, we're less in the hole today than we were a year ago.
I think that's, rather than saying how good we are. I want, I would rather us face it more realistically. We're not as bad as we were and we're getting better, but we're not in any wonderful position to tell everybody, my goodness, it's wonderful. You don't have to pay any taxes anymore, we got more money, we know what to do with, that's not the case.
No, and your, your, your deficit is actually majority is your long-term liability.
Right.
So that, that is paying over within like between twenty to thirty years, uh, depending on the terms of the contract. Uh, but especially in the general fund, your deficit is because there's a one long-term liabilities that you need to pay.
Got you.
Over twenty-five years.
Yeah, and for the most part, what we've been doing is, we've been doing cost control. We haven't been expanding services or any of that because we can't. What we've gotten to is now our base, this is our base. This is the lowest we can go and, uh, and still provide the essential services to the public.
So, so basically, we're, we're living within our means, but we're still paying off debts, was that, is that a good description?
Yes.
Is there any other counsel comments? I would like you to come back so we could, uh, discuss this more fully. And I know we have public comments, cause I can see Dr. Ritora standing there, ready to go. So is, uh, public comments, please come forward.
Stan Ritora. I'm retired, so I had a little more time to look at this than, or, or unemployed, depending upon how you want to look at it. Um, I had a little more time to look at this. I'd like to draw your attention to the figure on page I I. That would be in, in the PDF file, that is page twelve, or yeah, sheet twelve of the PDF file. And what it does is there's a paragraph that starts in front of the figure or the table. It says, "The city is beginning to see an upswing in community development and new construction." If you look, if you look through that figure, it turns out that the valuation of the fiscal year twenty fifteen was five point seven million dollars. Uh, that is the second lowest evaluation of all the eight years that are located there. Now, where I went to school, we're a year, second from the bottom, you're not doing all that good. In fact, you weren't, weren't going to be in school the next year. Also, if you look at the very top, two thousand and eight, you look at permits, two hundred and twelve. Then you go over to valuation and it's twenty-two million. Now that tells me that there were many, many new houses built in two thousand and eight. And as you go down the list, there are more and more and more permits pulled, but less and less valuation in those permits. That's telling me that the new housing starts are going down significantly. And the people who can't afford to buy new houses are remodeling, which is good. But, but nonetheless, um, the, the statement that, uh, there's an upswing. I, I think you need to be kind of careful, um, about putting too much emphasis in that. We have a long way to go before I think we're in any of, a, a real upswing. We're not out of the woods. And, and I hope nobody gets the feeling that we got, we can stop our efforts on economic development. If anything, we need to push harder and harder. If you go to page fifteen, which is also page thirty-nine in the PDF file. Uh, there's a paragraph at the very end and it talks about the general fund balance is now up to a minus one million dollars. And that we've done a good job of reducing it, uh, from what it was. And the gentleman who just spoke, I think, said it was like minus three point five million or minus four million. It was a big number, a big negative number and, and apparently we're making progress on it. However, on the, on the next page, on page forty, um, there's a number at the bottom of the blue table. That talks about, these are budgetary highlights, minus one million dollars. And I'm assuming that's what's being referred to as the rainy day fund or down here is called a fund balance. Um, my question is if we had, well, first of all, my understanding is we have eight hundred thousand dollars of carryover measure L dollars. And I'm assuming that those are in the general fund. And I'm curious, would, how would that mi- minus million dollars be impacted if we had spent the eight hundred thousand dollars of carryover funding? I guess specifically, would it be at like minus 1.8 million? If we had spent $800,000 out of the general fund?
Those are very included in the expenditures, so.
If we had expended them, they would have been included in the expenditures. But since we didn't expend them, and it's carryover, we've got 1 point million, minus 1 point million, 1.0 million dollars in the rainy day fund. What I'm saying is, had we spent the carryover money rather than carrying it over, what would that fund balance be?
I don't have the specific just for the measures itself, but the, the measures already include in the general fund.
Yeah.
So whatever the, 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 the total, 1.2, the 12 million dollars and $800,000, it's include the sum of the expenditures from the measure.
Okay. So my concern is that if, if we had actually expended the money, we would now be at a minus 1.8 rather than a minus 1. And so my feeling is, it's not quite as rosy as it's being painted here. And the year before, where it was, pardon me, glasses are getting as old as I am. Rather than being minus 2.3 million dollars because we had a $400,000 Measure L carryover, my concern is that that really, had we spent that money that year, been a minus 2.7 million dollars. So in other words, we're not catching up on that, that negative fund balance as quickly as we think we are, because those Measure L dollars, quite frankly, need to be spent. You know, we can't be sitting on Measure L dollars and then go back out and expect people to vote for Measure L again, 'cause it won't happen. If, if somebody, if they, if the public knows and finds out that, that we're using Measure L dollars to do nothing more than supplement our fund reserve, that would be bad publicity.
That's not fair, Stan. You, I mean, you and I agree on a lot of what you just said, except we aren't just sitting on it.
No, no, I, I don't think, I didn't purposely, we're not purposely doing it, perhaps. But what I'm saying is.
In the numbers, it shows that.
We, well, the numbers show we are.
Even though it's not real.
And we didn't spend them. Well, I didn't mean to imply we did it unintentionally. What I am trying to point out is, we do need to spend those dollars, and we need to get roads done.
Actually, I think, based on what I read in the paper about Measure L, we spent the $800,000, but it was taken out of TAB money instead of out of Measure L, is that correct? So the carryover in Measure L money was actually spent, but the previous finance director took it out of TAB money instead of out of Measure L.
We, we, we had allocated both, I think that year, we had allocated, based upon, I went, after all that discussion, I went back and looked at the budget. We had actually allocated $2.7 million of TAB funds. And we had allocated some number of Measure L funds also. So it was legitimately taken out of the TAB funds. All right, I mean, it had been authorized, it had been allocated, and it was taken out, all right?
It could have come out of either fund.
Well, it could have been taken out of either.
And TAB is not in the general fund, is that correct?
Correct.
But Measure L is.
Right. I beg your pardon?
I say TAB money is not in the general fund, but Measure L is.
Oh, yeah, right.
But I, I understand what you're saying, it's not as rosy as it looks here. But we still made some progress, because if you add the 800,000, we're at 1.8. If you add the 400,000, we're at 2.7, so we still made some progress.
Oh, absolutely, no question about it. We just haven't made as much progress. And it's my understanding that, and I, I thought everybody agreed that we were gonna spend that, that carryover Measure L funding on roads, right? So when that does happen, what I'm pointing out is, if we were to spend, or we had spent it before July 1st of this year, that fund balance would have been a minus 1.8, all right? I'm not try, I'm not trying to point blame, I'm just trying to look at the numbers.
And what you're also saying is, we spend that money this year, our deficit balance at the end of this June will probably be more than what it is last year.
Well, it's a function of how much money, more money we save. I mean, it'll, the delta's gonna be 800,000. I, i, if we can save 2 million, then it's still go better positive. But it's gonna come down, because right now, the reserve has got that carryover money in it. Okay? My last comment is, or question, comes on page 45. And that has to do with, and, and this, by the way, is the wastewater improvement fund. There is a line that talks about advances to the fiduciary fund. And it's basically $2.5 million. Can someone explain what the $2.5 million is to me?
Stan, I don't mean to alarm you, but you say a page number, and it doesn't match up with our page number.
So what, where are you? Give us a heading.
It is a statement of net position proprietary funds.
That is 45.
Page 45, written in the bottom, although if you're looking at the PDF file, it's page 69.
Okay.
And this is what I took off the internet, off the finance department, so I think it's probably.
Okay, all right. Can someone address this question?
Yeah, it's, it's right, right there in the, the second column.
Hi.
I'm trying to remember, I can't offhand. I can absolutely look it up and get you.
Is that the solar loan? I mean.
Yes, yes. That is the solar loan that we're in dispute with Department of Finance over.
That's the 3 million?
That's, well, it's 2 and 1/2 million.
2, 2 and 1/2, okay.
Yeah.
Well, that gives you part of your answer, Stan.
What, um, back in 2010, the city took out a loan for something less than $3 million for the solar park. Is that what we're talking to here?
Yes.
And, and that was a five-year loan taken out in 2010. I had been led to believe that it was supposed to be paid off in 2015.
That, that was a loan to the redevelopment agency. And as we all know, with AB1X 26 and 27, redevelopment agencies went away. We are currently in dispute with the Department of Finance to get that paid through the ROPS. But currently, it is unpaid.
Okay. One of the things I want to make sure everybody understands is, I see no difference between the redevelopment agency and, and the city. There may be technically, you know, a, a, a reason and logic, but the city built a solar park to help out the city finances. The money was supposed to be repaid to the wastewater fund, something near and dear to my heart. In the meantime, we keep having wastewater fund increases. My feeling is, the city needs to have a Plan B for how they're gonna return that money to the wastewater fund. I understand that the city is in financial straits. But the money that was borrowed from the wastewater fund needs to be repaid. And since we're talking about a new sewer plant in the near future, I don't know if it's gonna be this year, or two years, or three years from now. Eventually, that money is gonna be needed by the wastewater plant. So I would appreciate it if you would start looking at Plan B. As far as I'm concerned, it was, it was due to be paid back last year. And, and right now, either the city or the RDA is in default of a loan.
So Stan, Stan, could I, could I comment on that? Do you mind?
Sure.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but, so the, the, since the state absolved the redevelopment agency, the state now has the obligation to pay that back through the ROPS. So we, we're, we've submitted that, we're submitting it. And, and this is one of the many areas that the state is, is fighting the city on. And, and.
If, if they win, what is the city gonna do?
We're gonna have to pay it back, yeah.
We'll, we'll discuss it.
Yeah, I mean, the, the solar field went to support, my understanding is, the electricity for this building and the one next door. So as far as I'm concerned, the loan was taken out for the benefit of the city. So, but, there's no point in belaboring it, 'cause now, 'cause we all know, the, the loan, the loan was due and payable, I believe, June of 2015. And I didn't hear anything from, from anybody on the council or the staff even acknowledge the fact that that date went by without having this, this loan paid off. It's important, so.
I agree. Is, is, Ty, is there some way we can do, as, as Stan suggested, a Plan B, where we can talk about how we can address that should that happen? And can we be putting money in a repayment fund from some of our good reserve money?
We can always look at it during the budget hearing. But I, I think we still need to continue down the path with challenging the Department of Finance.
Because we've seen other cities win similar procedures.
But that's always an option in the budget pro, in the.
Yeah.
Best of all worlds, we win the lawsuit, and the money hopefully goes directly back into the wastewater fund. And, and, and that wastewater fund money may be needed soon. So that would be great. But, you know, right now, that lawsuit's been going on for how many years? And, and we haven't seen a lot of progress. So I'd appreciate if you'd start thinking about how we're gonna pay that wastewater fund back. That, all, all the comments ahead.
Sir, any other public comment? Thank you, sir. So we will get our questions to you. And if any of you have some, direct them to Ty. And we will then make arrangements if you could come back, because you're such a good guy. And we'll buy you lunch, how's that? I'll buy you lunch, okay? Okay, thank you. All right, a public comment. Persons wishing to address the council on matters that are within the council's jurisdiction and do not already appear on the agenda may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council may not take action on any item that does not appear on this agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes. The public comment section of the agenda is limited to a total of one hour. Each speaker is asked to provide his or her name. Please.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. I'm Mike Cash, 59-year resident in the Indian Wells Valley. I'd like to make a couple of comments. And one is, we buried an amazing man today, this afternoon. Army Colonel Lloyd Brubaker was laid to rest. An amazing man, because he was a father to me when I had no father. And he taught me science at Murray School in 7th and 8th grade, and kept me after school, and led me down to a, a path of, of good rather than the path I was going, which was not so good. And today, we honored him with a full military honor at our local memorial park. And he's a man that will be greatly missed and has touched many thousands of lives in our community. Many thousands, especially with our youth. A great man in the area of the American Red Cross, ham radio, emergency services. By the way, a plug for your emergency services committee here in the city of Ridgecrest. I get to travel all over the country. You guys are tops in the cities of this size in emergency services planning. No one can beat what you do here in that area, so thank you for that. My second comment is about the pending closing of the jail, now with an extension. Hurrah for that. I want to read a mission statement very quickly from the Kern County Sheriff's Office on their website. "The Kern County Sheriff's Office is committed to work in partnership with our community to enhance the safety, security, and quality of life for the residents and visitors of Kern County through professional public safety services." I can't say it enough, and I don't think we do. Recognize our law enforcement, our fire, our first responders. And so I want to say publicly, thank you for your service, and for your families, who also serve and sacrifice because of your service. So I want to thank, thank all of our public servants in the area of law enforcement, first responders. Then I want to say, you know, I've, I've sent out many emails to our elected officials dealing with our jail. I've been out picketing in front of the county building. And I want to say thank you to Sheriff Youngblood, and to Supervisor Gleason, who is here today. Thank you, sir, for this miracle extension that we received today, allowing us time, I hope, to better look at the impacts of closing the Kern County Jail here in Ridgecrest. The vast majority of our community do not understand what the impacts are of this. I am learning very quickly. I've been in correspondence with the sheriff, with Supervisor Gleason, with the mayor, with the chief, with the sergeant, Kern County Sergeant here in town, trying to learn this. And I appreciate the extension to look at this budget deficit within Kern County. I understand the price of oil, the agriculture issues, the drop in revenues of Kern County. And I hope, and I would appeal to everyone, to begin to work together to find a permanent solution to our Kern County jail so that we can keep it open without having to go from month to month or quarter to quarter with this. Again, Kern County mission talks about safety and security. Losing our jail would decrease our safety and decrease our security. And I, for one, as a private citizen, am willing to work with anyone to see a permanent solution to this. So with that, I thank you. And Supervisor Gleason, Denny, thank you very much for your time and, and efforts in working with this. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Teresa Jacobs. I'm here to gripe, I guess, about the parking on the Historical Society. I am not against the building of this Historical Society, but I am against, there's no parking there at all. Now, I wanna, I only made six copies, but if they could pass them out, I would appreciate it.
You okay?
Yeah, I'm fine. I did a little.
I did it just the other day myself. Are you sure you're all right, Teresa? I know that, I did that too.
Anyway, I just want to say that I'm not against the Historical Society. I mean, my dad started here. He was, he was one of the first committee to start the incorporation of the city of Ridgecrest. I'm not against the veteran building. I lost a brother in the Vietnam War. I'm all for that stuff. But the parking lot next to there was built for the rental of that building. And when they come, they take the whole building. They take all the parking. So no business can I rent to. Every time I get somebody interested in renting, they'll go drive down that street, and there's no parking. So why would they want to rent a building that there's no parking, you know? And the gentleman in there wrote that article about me, which was very, very bad, I thought, in my opinion, because I'm not against them. I just think they should have some parking. They, in my opinion, it was told to us about 10 or 11 years ago that they would, when they got that building, they would rip down, when the landscaping part of it moved out, they would rip down those buildings and put parking in. Now, that's 134 by 53 feet. That would give them approximately 20 parking spots. Now, they're not going to do it. They're gonna repurpose those buildings, and where are they gonna park, you know? There's no parking on Station Street either. So to me, the city needs to do something about this. You know, you, the, on the second page, it says what the requirements are for a building. Every 300 square feet, there should be a parking spot. They have absolutely zero parking, none whatsoever. The county health department, one day, was over there asking them to move their cars because they had taken their whole parking space. I was over there asking because the person in my rental was bitching to me, you know? Where are we gonna get customers? We can't do anything. There's no parking. What, you know, there's no reason to rent this building because we have no parking. I was informed Monday that they're going to be having a breakfast every third month, every third Thursday of the month, from 10, from eight to 10. Well, there goes the parking again, you know? And they keep saying I'm the bad guy. Well, I'm not the bad guy. All I'm trying to do is rent my building. I've had three people turn away because of that parking, you know? I don't think that's fair. I think the city council needs to do something about that. They need to enforce them to make some parking. That's what I think.
Teresa, you and I have, you have-
Oh, yeah.
Sent me emails over and over, and I have sent them on to staff. They're looking for what you referred to as an agreement-
It was a verbal agreement, yes.
That you and Bernie had had with-
11 years ago.
Yes.
Yeah, it was a verbal agreement.
And I know they told me they were not able to find that.
No, when a verbal agreement is made, you're not gonna find it, and nobody's gonna say, stand up to it, you know?
And I do know that, I talked to Mr. Hoppus, and he sent you a, a response saying they're gonna work very hard at it. I realize that doesn't solve the issue, and I'd like us to look at it. Dennis, can we ask staff to look at that issue and see if there's anything we can do to help accommodate this? We will, and-
And you added another building to that property. You know, I didn't see any of the city making him put in a parking for that added building at all. And that's a city ordinance. When I put in a building, I have to put in parking. You're not gonna let me open till I do it.
Yeah, and let me just say that they were very, there was no hard feelings. It's not like they were trying to make you the bad guy, at least when I spoke to Mr. Hoppus.
Well, what does that article say?
Except, the important announcement does make her the bad guy.
Does it?
It makes me a bad guy.
Okay.
I have quite a few calls. What are you doing? You know? This is, this is important to the city. I said, listen, I was born and raised here. Yes, it's important, you know? I'm not against that. My dad was one of the founders. I fought for it too.
I see. Thank you.
You know?
I do see that.
Thanks, okay.
We need to find a solution, and if we can help you at least understand and them understand how, if we can help in any way. Mr. Neal?
Yes. I have something to give to the council before I get started, so I'll try not to trip over the ledge there. I hand this out, just in case any of you did not see the email I sent out, which was, I believe, this afternoon, so you now have it in your hands, and you can see and take note of what I'm gonna talk about here. This is selected pages out of the upcoming court motion, the city versus Dale Howard, the receivership motions, and now they're going to make a motion to sell his properties, including his house. I have the full thing here. I'm gonna put that on the table when I'm done. I'm just gonna read portions out of there, and I've got these various pages highlighted, the, the statements on these pages that I'm gonna highlight here and talk about. Let's go to page, I'm sorry. Six. Second paragraph in page six, okay? Let's note this statement. They're, they're going through, and they've justified how they can get away with this, and they're instructing the judge and the court on that this is all okay, and we can do this, and so forth and so on, and they get down to what they want to do here. And they say it's a receiver's recommendation that a foreclosure sale be avoided, if at all possible, since they have some lender who they've taken out a loan against the properties, just like they owned them, by the way. But they say the best way to set the course for the future of this matter, and they're talking about selling this, so that they can bring in a new owner to abide by the governing municipal state housing code. And on page eight, again, second paragraph on that page says, talked again about wanting to sell properties. So this allows me to investigate and choose the buyer of the property, instead of allowing anyone who bids the highest at a foreclosure sale to become the owners of the property. Okay? So for some reason, he really wants to be able to sell this property and, and control who ends up buying it. Now, in the, it's actually a secondary document. Further in, it's a page three, but in this, this document, they got the paragraphs numbers, so it's paragraph 10 at the bottom. Says, "The preferable method of dealing with the certificate is for Howard to pay it off or refinance it. This would enable him to remain in his property. However, having communicated with him on this matter, I do not believe that he is willing or capable to do so." Well, of course, he's not capable to do so. The city has had him in court so long, he's spent everything that he has fighting for his property, fighting for his property rights, doesn't have anything left. So I guess now they're gonna sell the property out of my room. What's really curious is the very, would be the last page on the service list. Now, these are people who are, have been sent notice of this action, and all of a sudden, out of the blue, we see a bunch of different entities, but we see one of the builders here in town, all of a sudden, for some strange reason, is part of this action, and then other persons, by the last name of Ramirez, part of this action. And like I said in the email that I said, sent out earlier today, looks to me like that there are some backdoor communications going on, and the wolves are circling now. They're seeing a property that can be bought cheap coming up because of this situation, and they're getting, and so they're getting pre-notified, and this receiver wants to, he actually, if you look at the, the whole document, he actually wants to get a sale lined up, get a buyer lined up, before they even have the court hearing in a month. So that before they even actually get the court's onus to sell this property, they want to just go through like they're gonna, they're gonna sell it, like it's up, put it up for sale, and get a buyer, get bids, and get it all set and ready to go. Okay? Now, we can argue at least half a day's worth as to whether this is legal, whether all the steps have been followed, but I want to ask you, where is right here? Where is right and wrong? Throw a man out on the street. Here's what we're telling every citizen in this city that wants to stand up for their rights, who doesn't agree with the city, who won't submit. We're telling them, we're gonna rip you to shreds, we're gonna take everything you have, and we're gonna throw you out on the street. I hope the rest of you can live with this. I cannot. We need some changes around here, seriously. This black stain on this city, on this town, is the worst thing I've ever seen go on here in the, over 30 years that I've been here, and I am just sadly disgusted to see this happening. That's all I am.
Sir, any other public comment? Mr. Matthews?
Dave Matthews, address is on file. I urge all of you, councilmen, I'm not sure what Mr. Neal gave you, but I would like for you to really contemplate and look over the materials that he gives you on this situation. I have followed it from afar, and even from afar, the whole situation stinks to high heaven. Now, that's not what I came up here to talk about originally, but I also would like to just make one other comment. Mr. Cash, good to see you. I wish I had known about Mr. Brubaker, because I had contact with him prior to, over the years, and he was a very good man. The, I, I don't know if there was an obituary in the paper or not. If there was, I missed it. Now, some of you may know that in my retirement years, which has been about 20 now, I have kind of become an amateur meteorologist. And one of the things I look at constantly, thanks to the internet, is the snow coverage map, especially in the wintertime, for the whole United States and Canada. I was quite pleased, because I had predicted, amateur that I am, back in October, September or October, that we were gonna have a wet winter. And indeed, we hit, did. There was quite a bit of coverage across the whole nation, some even down in New Mexico, which many people are not aware of. This heat wave that we had the past week, I kept looking at the maps and watching the coverage in California kind of shrink away, which is naturally what you would expect. And I got to thinking the other day that I remembered something about our representative, Kevin McCarthy, saying that he had obtained some funding whereby the state of California could increase their storage facilities, dams, whatever. And I was wondering to myself, well, how much of this melting snow is actually being saved? And then I opened up the Daily Independent yesterday, and there, there and behold, on the editorial page was a guest article written by Kevin McCarthy about too much rainwater going to waste. I am not gonna read the whole thing, or even attempt to read, read all of it, but I am going to give the city clerk a copy, because I think it is an important enough issue that it needs to be in the record for the city of Ridgecrest. And I will invite all of you to go look at that article and read it tomorrow. It tells exactly why we have the severe drought situation that we have. Now, I'm not trying to say that the state of California can control the rain, no, but the state of California is very, what do I want to say? Complicit in not storing, not finding sources for the water, because the population of California has increased over the years, and none of the storage facilities, none of the water-producing mechanisms have, have increased like, at the same rate. So I think, because our county supervisor is here this evening, I'm gonna reiterate, I want to see the county and the city start pushing back to the state and putting the finger on the blame where it belongs, to the state government. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I'm Robert Shine. I talked to you last week, and I'm sorry that we weren't better prepared in, in regards to the helicopter and giving you some information, but you all have green folders in front of you there, and a lot of the information that we gave to you at that time has been highlighted and enlarged, and there's a lot of information in there in regards to, as we talked before, they basically used to land four to six aircraft in emergency landings, maybe a year, for like 20 years. When they originally were gonna put that heliport in, in that folder you'll show, and one of the citizens that is along this flight path put together that it was a bad idea to put that heliport in back then, but they chose later on to go ahead and put it in anyway. And at that time, as I told you in the past, they had sent out a flyer saying that that pad would be rarely used, and they did. Like I said, for the most part, 20 some odd years, they were fine. So in the last year, they have increased this to, and that's as a low average, like I say, 10 flights a month, and that's low because I'm not there when a lot of them land, and if you, we've had them anywhere from 16 flights in a month to down as low as maybe six. But a lot of those flights are in the middle of the night, waking everybody up, they're flying low over the houses, shaking the houses, and I apologize, we tried to send you the video, and we still will on some of those flights. Now, we talked to the Jim, as you asked me before, who was the Jim I talked at, at the hospital, which Heritage had contact, contacted the hospital, and the Jim is the CEO. And the CEO basically had told me that they hadn't changed their policies, and I like, I don't know, how do you go from four to six flights a year to as many as 16 in a month? They may not be able to handle the patients that are coming in now, and they may have changed the doctors, or how they handle certain patients and have to fly them out, but that doesn't excuse them from their original promise of that helipad not becoming a circus. Now, those flights are coming in all hours of the night, the hospital has bought up the nursing home, so you, a lot of the people that live right along that path where these helicopters are flying in unnecessarily over the top of the houses are seniors, and so are all the senior citizens in that nursing home. And they're being woke up in the middle of the night, so the flights will come in, and the minimum time, average minimum time those helicopters sit on that pad, not running, will be 30 minutes. So when they come in and land, they wake you up, then they shut their engines down, so you go back to sleep, then they fire them back up again, then they fly back out again. So you're not enduring just a flight coming in, you're enduring two flights every time, because you've gone back to sleep. Now, the old pad, I understand now, is still across the street, and it's owned by the city. Now, if the city can do something, and if they want to continue to fly those choppers in and out at this rate, then maybe they can work something out with the city. They have bought both of the properties directly across the street from the old helipad. Now, if they have these flights, or whatever, for whatever reason, when I talked to Jim, the CEO, I said, well, what's about the billboard you put up? What is meant by the first critical access hospital in California? Oh, that doesn't mean anything. We haven't changed our policy. Well, something's changed. And he said, well, I wasn't around back when the original pad was put in, so I don't know what, basically, agreement or anything that was said at the time about the flights. Well, you didn't need to be there, that, anybody that lives in an area or the neighborhood knows the flights have never been this steady, and this many flights coming in and out, and they, he even, had even stated that it's cheaper to transport those patients than it is to fly them in and out. Well, we had a flight last night. He sat on the pad for 50 minutes. I don't know how critical you consider that, when he can sit on the pad for almost an hour before he takes off. They have a transport bus there, or I've, I've seen it, I parked right next to it, a patient transport van, they could transport him out to Indian current airport, it's 12 minutes away. I know. I own property that's exactly the same distance. They can fly them in and out of there at night if need be, but the fact that them using that pad like it has been is, is getting, is getting carried away. And the fact that our houses are getting, at times, those pilots will come in in the middle of the night, like I said, shake the whole house. You know, there's no reason for that. If you look at those photographs in there, at the, the open desert area around the hospital, they should be adjust that flight path to not fly anywhere near.
Guess you didn't know that's your time.
I did, I did.
Okay.
We'll get some more information for you, and also come back and address it again.
Let me say this one thing. I talked to Mr. Suver after, after you addressed us last time, and he said he would be ready soon to come back and talk to us in public comment, so that you might hear some of his, I don't want to call it rebuttal, answers about what's happening.
Uh-huh.
And he was very open and willing to do that.
Okay.
And so he will, and I, I hope you're here, or you listen, if you're not here.
Oh, we'll try to be here until we can get the council to either address it or do something about it, like I said.
Well, we need to, we need to understand more fully what's happening, and this is the process he asked for.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm also a neighbor, I'm Gee Winkle, and I live right there next to the helipad, and the safety of my family is, you know, if they could, the unprofessionalism of the pilots of coming in- of coming in the way they are, low and blasting us with the prop wash and gravel flying everywhere. If they came in correctly or they located it better, were safely, you would think that they're professionals and they would do that and not come in in the manner that they are and disrespectfully to us, everybody else that lives on that house. It's housing tract, it's sad to see that you just, they don't care. You know, I know what they're doing is great, they're saving lives, that's awesome. That's, I'm all for that. Just I think that they need to be addressing how they're coming in, where it's at. If they could find a spot that's more convenient where they could come down, land, and do what, perform the great duties that they're doing, that'd be awesome. And I would love for you guys to maybe address that and talk to them and make that happen, find a solution from them dealing with the way they're doing it right now because it's just, it's scary. The kids are scared. I got video, I tried to show them. I don't know if we try to resend it again, showing them how we had to run in. You know, my wife and kids were getting pelted by the sand, and they were just going, really? You know, there's all this area, and they have to come in like that? And they just, whoosh, it's aggressive. And there's, you know, and that paperwork showing you how a piece of plywood could get thrown up. And, you know, what is it going to take to kill a life? Kill somebody and then, oh, wow. That's sad, you know, you lost your life for that. But, you know, we're just, and is it a money thing? Is there making a lot of money out of that? To come in there, you know, what's the breakdown on that? If it could be a little pad and save the life and be convenient and still perform the business that they're doing, why can't that be an option? So thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment?
Good evening, Benny Fuller. So just real quick comment, and so I've brought up before how I feel about the left-hand red arrows at every intersection, and how I think it's a little on the ridiculous end for the amount of traffic here. But specifically, I wanted to bring up the arrow at Norma and Inyo Kern Boulevard. It's unnecessary because there's no traffic coming the other way. So you have a red arrow, a green light, and when that red, when that arrow turns green, the light doesn't necessarily turn green. So you just have the ability for traffic to turn left, but no one, people have to come to a stop before they can turn right, which is just completely unnecessary since there's no cross-traffic, there's no oncoming traffic. I think that intersection should be changed so that there's, you know, to get traffic through a little faster, maybe, maybe a little less, you know, because with that whole California Emissions Act that we're trying to follow with syncing the lights up on Channel Lake Boulevard, I think that would be a good intersection to look at, maybe get rid of that arrow and make it just a green light to get through. That's about it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I can advise District Nine, but that is a Caltrans signal.
There's your answer.
I can advise Caltrans District Nine, but that intersection is a Caltrans-controlled signal.
Okay.
Okay, any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we're going to close public comment. Council announcements. Jim, you want to start first? No, no council comments or announcements. Consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by city staff and will be approved in one motion if no member of the council or the public wishes to comment or ask questions. If comment or discussion is desired by anyone, that item may be removed. The consent calendar will be considered separately with public comment before action is taken. Does anybody in the council wish to pull any of these items?
Item four.
Item four. Do you want, item four and five, okay. I'm going to read them. Normally I do, so I'll go do that. Adopt a resolution to award a construction agreement to AC Electric Company in the amount of $357,000 for the installation of a traffic signal at the intersection of Channel Lake Boulevard and Bowman Road and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. That's number four that you asked to be pulled. Number five, adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Ridgecrest, setting dates and times for the operation of irrigation systems. We ask that to be pulled. Number six, approve the draft minutes of the Ridgecrest City Council Successor Redevelopment Agency Financing Authority Housing Authority, special workshop meeting dated January 28, 2016. Approved draft minutes, that's item number seven. Approve draft minutes of the Ridgecrest City Council Successor Redevelopment Agency Financing Authority Housing Authority, special closed session meeting dated January 29, 2016. Approve the draft minutes of, number eight, approve the draft minutes of the Ridgecrest City Council Successor Redevelopment Agency Financing Authority Housing Authority Regular Meeting dated February 3, 2016. So is there any public who wishes to pull any of those items?
Yeah, more files.
Okay, we've already got them pulled. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adopt six, seven, and eight.
Councilmember Maurer.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Mayor Breeden.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Acton.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sanders.
Aye.
All approved.
Okay, item number four. Mr. Spear, would you like to address that, please?
Question. I don't understand the math. We're awarding a bid of $357,000. We say we have allocated funds of $440,000. We want to have a contingency of 35.7, is that right? And we have to have matching funds of $44,000.
That's correct. We have to have a match with the HSIP funding, but we would only get into the contingency. I mean, if we don't use the contingency funding, then we will, we wouldn't need a tax to reach into Mezural.
Okay, so we're, you're saying that the 44.7, the project's underfunded and additional funds in the amount of 44.7 are needed to complete this project. How do you, how do you get to the 44.7? Because it says the local funds required, which is the 10% match, were provided in fiscal year 1314 by Mezural funding and has already been allocated to this project. So is the local match funds what we're short?
But that was only 44,000, right?
That was only 44. So the 440,000, I assume, is available, but we're only got a bid of 357.
That's correct.
So our contingency, we have to come up with a contingency that could come out of the 440, is that correct?
Yeah, well, hold on just a second because I worked this out on the draft before this ever went into print, and all the numbers worked out, so hold on just a second.
Rather than wait while you're doing that, would you mind if we went to item number five?
Unless he has some question.
Unless.
I got comments on four.
Okay, well, we're waiting for, all right, go ahead, please.
My question was, I didn't check the math, but right now, East Bowman is closed at that intersection. Is this construction going to start before that opens? Or is it going to wait until it does open? And if it's going to be open before the barrier comes down, will the light be activated? I don't think we need a light there right now, myself.
Okay, since we're still on this item, let's let Mr. Spears, Mr. Spears finish with his math.
I think the, I think the light is to be there so when it is open because then it's going to be a major intersection, and it's going to be open in about three months.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch all of that. Please repeat.
I said, the proposed opening date of the intersection is in three months. So by the time they get this out and get it put in, it'd be just about the right time to coincide with the opening.
Okay, I didn't know that it was going to be open that soon.
It's supposed to be open the first of May. I assume that's still on schedule.
Yeah, I can help clarify that issue. The traffic signal will be constructed in conjunction with the Walmart improvements to the intersection. We're going to coordinate that effort with Walmart. And, but right now, we need to award the project. We do need to issue a notice to procure some of the facilities, particularly the signal mast arms. They're a long lead item, and we've got a deadline in which we have to issue an invoice back to Caltrans. So we do have a mandate to hit a deadline here for getting an invoice in to Caltrans for purchase of those long lead items. But the signal will be built in conjunction with the construction of the intersection. Regarding the timing, I just checked the schedule that Walmart has. They've had some slip in their project, and they're anticipating starting the intersection about the middle of April. So we have had some delay. Part of the delay, and part of the reason for that, too, is they're still trying to not incur any damages as a result if we do have an El Nino event. They did want to wait till after February, March to see if, see if there's a possibility that we might miss a bullet here for an El Nino event.
Haven't figured, I haven't figured all the math out, but what it is, is when you combine the engineering, the construction contract, the 51,000, and the construction engineering, that totals $440,000. That was the amount of the, that HSIP's covering, and we need to pay our 10% of that. In addition, we need to pay the 10% because you've noticed that's only $348,000 for the construction project. The low bid is $357,000. So we have to cover our match, plus we have to cover the $35,700 for contingency.
Is it reasonable to assume that another bid, a rebid, would drop that? Or is it so close that?
On signals, we rarely get as many bidders as we would on a street project.
So the engineering and construction engineering are separate from the contract? That's not included in the contract?
That's not included in the contract.
So that's the full 440, okay?
And because the construction contract that's funded by HSIP is only the 348, we're short the difference between the 357, and we also need our 10% match.
With the 10% match, the 35.7 is coming for Mezural funding, is that correct?
That's correct.
So the 10% match is 44, so are we short 44.7 or are we short 44?
I think we're short 44.7.
Where is the 700?
We subtract 357 minus.
Or is there only 35 available from Mezural, and that's the 700?
7 minus 48, 348. 357 is 9,000. It's $9,000.
I'm in favor of the project, I'm just, was confused by the, by the math. So I guess the question is, is that 700, the 44, I know where the 44s come from, I know where the 7s come from. The 7s come from the 35.7, and we only have 35 coming from Mezural. Is that, is that correct?
The, our monies are, any contingency money needed and our match money is coming from Mezural.
Councilmen, do you understand, or do we all understand where they are coming from? Or do we need to talk about it more?
If I'm reading it, it's parts coming from Mezural for the one contingency, and then the other part.
Ty mentioned that it's $9,000 difference between the 357 and the 348. In other words, the construction amounts. Then that 9,000 gets added to the 35.7, which is what gives you the 44.7 as the total amount.
No, I don't understand.
So the 35, hold on, I had it, now my brain just lost it again. So there's a difference that, on the nine, in the math. And so you're recommending that that part come from the traffic impact fees from the Walmart project, the part that's not covered by the Mezural? Is that right? That's how we got the 44.7?
That's correct.
So the funds coming from Mezural are the 44,000?
For the match money.
Okay.
And then the additional.
And the 37, the 37, 35.7, and the 9,000 difference is the 44.7?
Are you ready to call, or?
Okay, I'm fine.
Okay. All right then, is there any other public comment? Okay, a motion to approve item number four.
Summed. Councilmember Maurer.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Mayor Breeden.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Acton.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sanders.
Aye.
All approved.
Okay, the next item was item number five that was pulled, and Mr. Seelander, I think you're handling that.
I just, I have a real quick question, or maybe two. With the new irrigation ordinance is that we're going to be implementing with the days for the evens and the days for the odd numbers. When we say special permit down on Resolution Number 3A, the very last sentence, it says, unless a special permit is issued to accommodate newly planted material. What constitutes a new or a special permit? Or where do we get a special permit from as well?
And we might want to revise that to clarify this. This, this resolution was written to mirror the resolution of the Water District because we don't want to, we want to be in absolute sync with their requirements regarding irrigation because they're the ones that enforces this. My understanding is that we're not, we, the city, is not planning to issue special permits. That would have to be done by the, by the Water District.
Okay. Because that brings my other question is, cost, I'm assuming there'll be a cost involved in it as well?
It might, but that will also be set by the Water District. They're the ones that have to restriction over the irrigation and enforcement of irrigation.
And do we know, I guess we'll probably talk to Water District as well, but do we know how long this will go on, this particular watering schedule that we're talking about implementing?
We don't at this point. And many things may change depending on what the state of California comes down with. But at this point, we're going to follow what the Water District mandates, and we're going to work with them. And if they change it, then I'm going to ask them to notify us so we can kind of always be in sync. to, to notify us, so we can kind of always be in sync and harmonize our regulations here.
Okay.
But we don't know the, how long this is going to be in effect.
Right now, the Water District is at a point that they can be charged $125,000 a day for not meeting their quota of the amount of water they need to reduce. So, they're trying to keep it as, as reasonable as possible, yet still being able to fulfill that 36% they need to reduce.
Then, well, then, are we still providing or asking for incentives for people, homeowners, to reduce the uses of water by putting in zero scape and stuff like that?
The Water District has that.
Has that, it's still under them, too?
They, and then they have cash progress, as well as that kind of help, where they have ambassadors who will go out and help you determine what, what you can do to take your lawn up, what you can do to make it more fully, in a zerofit manner.
Okay.
Is there any other council comments? Okay, public comment?
Yes. My question was, is the business of item five not included in the ordinance that's, we're going to be considering in, what, nine? And if so, if not, why not? Do we need both of these? I don't know.
Well, the reason we split them up in two parts is that we wanted to be able to, if you're going to change the ordinance, it takes two readings every time. It takes a long time to revise the ordinance. And what we typically do when it comes to, for example, fees, or, you know, something like this, a regulation that can be changed now and then, just like fees will be, instead of having that in the ordinance, which is hard to change, we put that in a separate resolution that we can change more quickly to follow, in this case, what the Water District mandates. So, that's why we have it in two different places.
All right, thank you.
Well, also, the item five goes along with the Water District, make it equal the Water District, and item nine is mandated by the state.
That's correct, yes.
Stan. I think, I thought we talked about this at one of the committee meetings, might have been the City Org meeting, not too long ago. And, and I thought that the ordinance that we were going to implement was simply a simplification of the California model ordinance, and, and that was all it was going to be. Rather than adding to it, now, the discussion tonight leads me to believe that this is something other than just the California model ordinance.
But this, they're two different things, Stan. Item, item five brings the city in, in tune with the, with the Water District's irrigation rules.
Okay, and, and I guess I, I would oppose that. My, my feeling is, if we have done what we need to do to comply with the California model ordinance, then we've done everything we need to do to comply with California law. The Water District is, right now, in the process of changing their water rates. Right now, they're giving away water at 52 cents per unit of water. They recognize that they are not encouraging any type of water conservation as a result of that. My feeling is that they're going to be changing many, many things in the next three to six months, and, and I, I don't see any need for us to be changing the city code or resolution simply to keep up with the Water District. They're the ones that enforce it. I don't see any need for anything more strict than simply putting the California model ordinance into simplified language that people can understand, which I thought was really the, the point of what we're doing. The, the Water District is in a state of flux. My feeling, we ought to let, let it settle down before we do anything, as well as, I don't think we want to get involved with having to worry about enforcing something that's connected with an ordinance. It, it may be a resolution, but I believe the ordinance does somehow tie back to this resolution. There's nothing, there's nothing in the ordinance that addresses this resolution whatsoever?
There is. There's one line saying that the allowable irrigation days and hours will be determined and set by the council by way of resolution, which we're doing today.
Okay. Well, in any event, my, my feeling is, it's unnecessary, and all it's going to do is create future problems. I think we need to let the Water District sort things out, figure out what they're doing, before we start jumping through loops, hoops, pardon me. Thank you.
Okay, is there any other public comment? Any other council comment?
Come on, Brain. Yes, and Councilman Thomas, you brought up a point under A where unless a special permit is issued to accommodate newly planted material, since we don't, since we do not give out the permits, we're not in charge of that, should we not, comma, put in with it, get those from the Water District and not from us? I guess is what I'm trying to say in the ordinance, because otherwise, it kind of intimates that the permit's going to be issued by us, and we don't issue those. The Water District does. So, other than just adding some line right there, it, that's my two cents, so that it's not confusing. Because you brought up a point, who issues the permits? That, that, otherwise, I'm in favor of passing, and I just think we need to add that.
We certainly could add that, if you want to. The way it reads now, it's legally sufficient, but it is unclear who would issue that permit. So, we can certainly add that, as you, as you stated it, unless a special permit is issued, and after material, add comma, or by the, by the Water District.
Would you like to amend that? Can we amend it that way? Okay. So, do we have a motion to approve as amended?
Oh, just a moment.
To approve as amended?
Second.
Councilmember Maurer?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Acton?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sanders?
Aye.
All approved.
Okay, the next item is, we're down to the ordinances. Second reading and adoption ordinance number 1601, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Richcrest amending the Richcrest Municipal Code as it relates to water efficient landscaping. Mr. Seelander?
Yes, we had a first reading last time. I don't know if you have any more comments on this? Any comments or questions?
Any other comments? Any public comments? Okay, motion?
So, oh, motion to waive reading first, right? So, I'll motion to waive reading in full.
Second.
Councilmember Maurer?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Acton?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sanders?
Aye.
All approved.
Okay, and then a motion to adopt by title only.
So, move.
Second.
Councilmember Maurer?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Acton?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sanders?
Aye.
All approved.
Okay, item number 10, adopt a resolution, City of Rich, of the City Council of the City of Richcrest establishing the salary of the position of city manager. Mr. Seelander?
Yes, Ms. Mayor. The, this is an open session item, because it discusses salary. The City Council previously had a few sessions in closed session discussing the work performance of the city manager, and now it's time for the salary discussion.
Okay, I'd like to say, say something. I don't generally go first, so if somebody else wants to. I'd like to read something that I wrote. Actions, perhaps for the right reason, were taken by previous councils and will be perpetuated by this council. I would like to explain my opinion. In the face of extreme financial difficulties, the previous city council offered to Dennis Spear, then Public Works Department head, the job of being interim city manager. Also, Mr. Spear agreed to do both jobs for the same amount of money. I'm assuming because he and prior councils knew the financial limitations, and more importantly, he believed that he could help the city through this process and do both jobs. During the course of this interim experiment, several city administrative positions ended through illness or whatever reasons. At some point in time, the city council made him city manager, and things continued with Mr. Spear doing both jobs. Recently, during numerous closed session, this council conducted a review of Mr. Spear's employment. While recognizing Mr. Spear's excellent work and knowledge in the public works area of city government, we noted some actions we would like to see accomplished or changed in the city manager's scope of work. Mr. Spear responded with an education for most of us, including me, as to the scope of his work that is required, as described in the Richcrest Municipal Code. I recognized even more fully that additional work would perpetuate the inherent problem of one man with two jobs even more. No man can do two, can do these two difficult jobs, accomplish the much-needed work the public deserves, and give the time needed to do two consuming jobs without additional staff. We are setting ourselves, Mr. Spear, the staff, and the city for even more frustration with unfulfilled expectations. Mr. Spear has asked for his mandated step raise. He has not taken nor requested previous ones. He has this year. In doing so, I believe it is deserved, and I understand budgeted. I want to see the budgeted step raise money be used to hire a part-time assistant for someone else to allow them to assume some of Dennis's workload. I do not think a part-time person will solve all of our issues, but it will be an improvement. I would like to see during the next budget cycle that these two positions be divided and budgeted, funded, and filled. The people of Richcrest deserve a fully engaged city manager and a fully engaged public works department head. Money is an unending issue. I do not believe we have an expenditure problem. Everything has been cut to the bone. We have a lack of revenue problem. I do not fault Mr. Spear. However, I do fault the position set up as a one man doing two jobs. Again, he could not be expected due to the work of two and an efficient and, and manner and fulfilling the public trust. Doing the same thing twice and expecting different results is a fool's mission. That is what we are going to be doing again. Let me reiterate, I do not fault Mr. Spear's work. I do not think it is, he is at fault in any way for things that have not been done. Unfortunately, he is one man and doing two jobs, and is in possible situation. I can't understand how we can expect him to do more as we gave him direction to do and say, now do, do more, because you were already doing so much more in the past. My comments. Any other comments?
Yeah, I've got some comments. Madam Mayor, I, I agree with you. Mr., Mr. Spear's done the job of two people. I would say he's done the job of more than that. Past city managers have had much more support staff. Our current city manager has almost no support staff, just because that's what we've had to cut down to. I think when Lori and I got, got put on in the City Council a few years ago, that was one of the first things we had to decide on is, is putting Dennis in, or deciding an interim city manager. And, you know, having Dennis step up to the plate really got us out of a jam. And, I think he's done a good job, and I, I think that deserves to be rewarded, so I am absolutely for the, the step increase.
Is there any other council comment? Any public comment? Okay, we'll entertain the motion.
I'll move approval of, yeah. What do I say? I'll move approval of the resolution establishing the salary increase, or the, establishing the salary of the position of the city manager.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Motion?
Councilmember Maurer?
No.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Council, Mayor Breeden?
No.
Vice Mayor Acton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sanders?
Yes.
Three approve, two oppose.
Thank you. Okay. The next item is, where are we? Oh, a presentation by discussion by the Technic, Technology Committee of, on reliable community-wide broadband implementation. I ask this to be brought, the committee headed by Jay Chan has been working on this for many, many months, and I would like them to come forward and make their presentations, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for inviting the committee to speak before the council. The Broadband Technology Committee is a subcommittee to the Economic Development Committee. It was formed to look at identified constraints and enablers impacting the growth of current businesses and the recruitment of new businesses. One identified constraint was slow internet, and the technology subcommittee was formed with volunteers to address this constraint and make it into an enabler for economic development. The committee established a goal to implement, implementation recommendations of a gigabyte, gigabit internet fiber optic network for Richcrest. We explored technical, financial, management, administrative alternatives to come up with a recommendation for an implementation solution, a solution that not only benefits economic development, but benefits the entire community. And I'd like to introduce the members of the committee, and if they would stand, please. Dr. Earl Ferguson, Dave Matthews, Chip Holloway, Bill Sunders, Justin O'Neil, and myself. And we had some significant contributions from Timothy Knight and Ray Hocker. With the exception of Justin O'Neil, all the members are volunteers and with no official ties to the city. What is broadband internet? Broadband is a high-capacity transmission system for reliable internet communications. State-of-the-art fiber optic cable can transmit much more than gigabits per second. Other brand of broadband techniques like coaxial cable and wireless Wi-Fi are much more limited than fiber, typically to 100 megabits per second or a little faster. The California Broadband Cooperative, abbreviated CBC, is a cooperative organization headed by a board of directors owned and operated by members in the eastern Sierra region. It is a major resource for regional gigabit fiber optic network implementation. The CBC completed the Digital 395 Backbone project in 2014. The 583-mile network actually operates as an internet backbone between Carson City and Barstow, California. The project was funded by the U.S. Department of Commerce under the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act of 2009, and the California Advanced Services and Reinvestment Act of 2009 and the California Advanced Services Fund administered by the California Public Utilities Commission. The next segment of the presentation will describe the benefits of broadband to the community and economic development. And we have speakers to address the economic development benefit and the benefits to quality of life in our community, which is health, education, and addressing the benefits for the residents. So our first speaker for economic development is Beth Sumners.
I'm here to address very briefly the impact of broadband investment on economic development. While the Economic Development Planning Committee was formed to look at the broader arena of potential economic development for the city, we recognize the key role that having broadband infrastructure plays in that potential. Broadband is becoming increasingly important to national economics and to the personal life of its users, and hence, local communities. Broadband networks provide the framework for the delivery of different services, ranging from telephone services, high-speed internet access, very diverse multimedia services like video streaming, online games, teleworking, et cetera. Broadband networks share some common features with other public infrastructure elements. However, the information intensity and the breadth of activities that can be supported by high-speed software applications, ranging from business-critical processes to entertainment to e-learning, are some of their unique characteristics. There have been many professional investigations into how broadband penetration affects economic growth. I'm not going to detail all of the parameters and variables used in these studies, or bore you to tears, but suffice it to say that they are significant. Substantial data was derived from the FCC and several other government and proprietary sources. If you would like to have copies of any of those investigations and studies that I used in my presentation here, I'd be happy to provide them. They're quite lengthy. I pulled out a few that were significant. For instance, in 2014, Science Direct used recent data on broadband adoption to empirically gauge the contribution of broadband to the economic growth of rural areas in the United States over the past 10 years. Results show high levels of broadband adoption in rural areas positively impact economic growth and negatively impact unemployment growth. Similarly, low levels of broadband adoption in rural areas lead to decline in the number of firms in the total employment numbers. The ITU accomplished a study recently that used evidence from 15 European Union countries over four years to estimate the impact of broadband infrastructure investment on economic development. The result indicates a significant causal effect link, especially when critical mass of infrastructure is present. Further, this significant study shows that the coefficient of penetration rate is significant and positive. This suggests that an increase in broadband adoption and use generates significant aggregate economic output. The Public Policy Institute of California conducted an extensive study to assess the link between broadband investment and its contribution to local economic development, among other items. Their analysis indicates a positive relationship between broadband and economic growth. The study indicates that broadband expansion is also associated with population growth, which may raise property values in the local tax base. I could cite dozens of other studies conducted by qualified organizations and academia, but we'd be here all night. I can say the general consensus of all those that I read is that investment in infrastructure affects growth positively, and broadband is no exception. So I also want to talk local for a minute, because economic development is not all about attracting new businesses to town. It's also importantly investing in the available growth potential of a community's existing businesses, and I don't want us to ignore that. My own personal example: Bill and I own a small business, Firequick Products, here in the area, and we're blessed to work in a unique niche of the wildland firefighting market. But because the United States Forest Service is not what we would consider a leader in high-tech solutions, we didn't really require the ability in the past to respond to the demands that might have been imposed on other industries sooner. But times change, and as a business owner, I know we have to change with them to stay relevant, and we need growth to stay in existence. And if we aren't willing to look at how we best proceed to grow our business, we'll be gone. So now, like for us, we do serve that wildland firefighting community. The older superintendents and managers are retiring out, and now, younger, media-savvy leaders are moving into those decision-making positions. So to keep pace, we're having to look at how do we get those decision-makers to be using our stuff, buying our stuff, training on our stuff? And increasingly, the solutions that we have to have involve the necessity of high-speed internet, and the broadband infrastructure needs to be there. So for us, for instance, just to give you some ideas, I can increase our online profile greatly with broadband. People want to see what they're going to be using, and we've got these guys out there now who, you know, they want to be able to upload videos. They want to be able to stream training videos that we can provide them, you know, to be able to do our stuff. But if I am going to enter that social media world and expose our products to very much larger and very targeted markets, I have to be able, without broadband, I have to invest greatly, from a capital expense standpoint, in hardware, software, IT, personnel, maintenance, and it's just not within the realm of a small business's budget typically to do that. So if I don't have high speed available as a service or as a utility, I won't be able to access that. Hence, that growth doesn't exist. One problem for us, for instance, is we cover well the northwest and the western communities, and we sell easily to them. We want to expand more to the northeast and the southeast. We want to be able to do more business internationally. But that means I have to pick up my stuff, I have to try to go to trade shows, I have to try to go to training events, and when you're having to travel, especially internationally or even to the east coast, the cost becomes prohibitive. So my ability to expose our products to that market is difficult. So if I, and with video conferencing and things that comes with high-speed internet, the ability to upload and stream and video conference and share screens, I can do that same thing without those travel costs and without that investment. And it just enables me to grow our business and expose our products to an ever-increasing market. What does that mean to me? Increased sales. Secondly, we're looking at increasing our capability of selling our products on e-commerce. Now, for us, that's difficult, because we sell hazardous materials, dangerous goods. I have to be able to qualify my buyers on the spot. That has prohibited us from being able to have e-commerce for our products, because slow speed doesn't allow me to do that fast enough. I can't process that transaction. I can't have UPS communicate the cost of sending those dangerous goods in time to complete a transaction sale. That means I'm not capturing online sales. That's a bad thing for local business. We want to be able to do that, and high-speed internet will allow it. We've already investigated it, we have a contract ready to go. I just need the capability to be able to do it. Other things like, you know, our professional appearance, the telecommunications capability. Right now, we have a phone system that Cedric Knight was nice enough to sell us for 500 bucks when he upgraded his. We don't have voicemail, we don't have all these certain things. Small business just simply can't afford a lot of that capital investment. With broadband and high speed, I can have voice-over internet phone systems. I can do all kinds of things, and I can look very professional, and I can increase my exposure to the market. Lastly, more business processes can be moved to the cloud. That also saves on capital investment. The high-speed internet decreases search and transaction times. I just kept some notes. A year ago, we have to do our business plan on SERs for the county. We had, like, low speed, whatever. It took me almost 15 minutes to upload my files to the county so that I could get my approvals. This year, and we're only on wireless connection to CBC, we don't have hard connection yet, but it's already so much better, it took two minutes. So if you start looking at those transaction times and applying it to your people's labor costs, you can see how we can save a lot of money, both in not having to have the capital and increased capability. So I think it's, you know, from my standpoint, it's relatively easy to see how this investment in broadband and having broadband available can help increase the business and the growth of our local businesses and hence, our economy. I look at it from a very simple bottom-line standpoint. Those increased sales I can capture, that's increased jobs. The decreased costs, increased jobs. Increased profits, increased jobs, better wages. This can be happening for probably the majority of our small businesses here in this community if we had the service to offer. So in closing, I would just say that Ridgecrest is in the unique position as a rural community that has CBC fiber running down its main thoroughfare. That is something very advantageous to us. Our community is comprised of a high number of highly educated people, and these tend to be the earliest and the most consistent subscribers of broadband. We have an opportunity as a city to lead and increase the desirability of our locale to both established businesses and startups, and we're supported with very positive upside and likely chance of success because of the factors that are already existing here. We should take a page from the book of innovative thinking and can-do attitude of those leaders who saw something valuable and novel in this remarkable desert environment. Out of that spring, knots, knots at the time, now knock weapons, we need to do that with our city. We need to think broadly. We need to think innovatively. We need to look at relevant opportunities that exist right before us, and the fact that we have the first step already accomplished, that's huge. So I really encourage the council to lead the pursuit of the broadband infrastructure, do what it takes, implement policies, processes, procedures, plans to advance the utility with the economic development opportunities are truly, truly more dismal without it. And I think it'd be a huge mistake if we didn't take the opportunity in front of us and figure out how to go after those grants, how to go after the funding necessary, whether it's bonds or whatever, to enable us to do it. And it will impact our economic development substantially. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Our next topic will be telehealth, and leading that discussion will be Dr. Ferguson.
I'll try to make this quick in the interest of time. The Ridgecrest Regional Hospital is very well-connected. We've got one gigabit connectivity directly into our hospital system for Ethernet, and it's interesting, that's just one of six fibers that are into the hospital. And with that one fiber, we have the capability theoretically to go up to 400 terabytes of data, which is, one terabyte is 1,000 gigabits. So that just shows you what type of connectivity the Digital 395 Project, this California Broadband Cooperative, has. With telemedicine expected to double every year for the next few years, a lot of those applications are going to grow, and so we're going to have to have much, much more connectivity at the hospital, and we have the capability to expand to that. One thing that concerns me more is that the mobile applications that people will use at home and with their own devices that relate to health are expected to double every two years for probably at least the next decade. And we've got to have gigabit connectivity in the community if they're going to use those applications. So we've really got to take a look at that. And let me just make, I put on another hat. I'm also one of the directors of the California Broadband Cooperative that implemented the Digital 395 Project. And just to let you know the capabilities of that broadband, there are 452 fibers in the cable. We only, with two fibers, we connect 150 gigabits all the way from Reno to Barstow. And we're just using a very small portion of what that cable can carry. So that cable has really unlimited capacity, and it's nothing like anyone else can develop. The telco vendors cannot, they don't want to put in fiber, it's too expensive. They'd rather just push things through copper, do things wireless. But those are very, very limited. So that's why we're going to have some very specific recommendations on what needs to be done to move us forward.
Thank you, Earl. I'd like to bring up Eric Bruin. His business is connected with fiber to the Digital 395, and I'd like to have him tell us how it has impacted his business.
Jay, can you click that, because it's not keeping up with where you're going?
This slide pretty much covers all the speakers that I...
Oh, I see, okay. Thank you. Sorry.
The next one is all about how to get the money afterwards. Thank you for asking. I was asked to present today, and I'm very happy to once again be here to champion the idea of what internet can do for a business, not just from a business, but also from a social aspect. I want to tell you two stories, which is first, if you haven't ever read the book Ready, Player One, I'd ask you to take a minute and try and go into the dystopia world that he talks about in 2045, in which communities only exist around broadband hubs, because everyone operates within the internet any longer and the oasis coin has became the only currency used globally. Hmm, an idea. Why? Because broadband really is about what our future is. People will use the internet more every year for the next 50 years in a growing exponential way. We've seen it over the last several years, and we continue to see an exponential growth, and all these studies represent that. And my business made the same conscientious decision in October of 2013 that we needed to make a change. We saw what Digital 395 was going to bring to the table, and Desert Valley's made the decision that we are going to change our core processor. Now, a core processor for our financial institution is about a half-million-dollar investment, and it's what is the backbone of every transaction we do for a member. I want you to imagine that for a 12-person staff, that can seem a bit daunting. But at that point, we actually knew what our plan was with Digital 395 and how we were going to get from October 13, hopefully to stand here now, February 2016, and share with you something about how broadband can make a direct investment. During that course of time over the last two fiscal years, our credit union has grown 5.42% in 2014 and 17.42% last year. In 2014, that project constituted 22 hotel nights. More than 10 different people were here on-site doing the work. We invested $27,000 to bring it from the corner to our building, and that $27,000 has already created more than $8,000 in net revenue per month for our business. Now, let's do the math on what that means to you as an economic development. Our business is growing. We have went from $24 million to, at the close of this month, hopefully, just over $30 million in assets. That's $6 million in growth. Seems rather small, but for us, that's close to 20% in two years. We now have cloud technology in place for our core processor that everything exists in Memphis, Tennessee. If we should be struck by an earthquake, my members will have access to cash at the same time and the same day, as long as that broadband channel is available. I will be able to operate for them in a disaster mode. I'll be able to serve our community in a disaster mode. Why? Because my technology has been moved to the cloud. Can I maintain on the cloud with a seven-megabyte download that Verizon BSL was able to offer me? Never. In fact, from an efficiency perspective, my staff was spending more time per day trying to manage through the internet that we had versus the efficiency which we operate today. And I want to put that efficiency into words for us. Last Wednesday, we had a very important meeting here. At 8:05 a.m., I dropped my... At 8:05 AM, I dropped my son off to school and drove into work, and I said, "I'm going to do my very best to make sure that people are here for that meeting." For $3.82 using social media, we drew 9,000 views and 700 signatures to a free online petition to present information about the jail. I have contacted the supervisor, the sheriff, they've seen the communication. I did nothing more than simply use the opportunities that were there, but I was able to use them because I had the access. If you don't think broadband is accessible and it changes the dynamics of your business, you're not seeing the big picture. Broadband is not simply about a product that a business can use, it's about how that business operates in its entire surround. We were 11 employees in 2013. Next week, I will be hiring my 13th employee. That is two new employees in two years. Roughly one year from now, I'm currently in negotiations with five other financial institutions to open a five-person call center on my property. That's five more jobs to our community as a result of broadband. I totaled 116 nights of hotels to this community as a result of that one project. How many nights can you look at me straight in the face and tell me the Petroglyph Festival That was created by broadband. And if the city does not understand that investing in this as a future of our economy, you are asleep at the wheel, driving down the road, and snoozing to the tunes. It's past. It's a reality. Businesses that are going to grow, and the people that you're hearing here are the people that actually want to grow their businesses. Mr. and Mrs. Summers want to grow their business. That's why you hear the passion in their voices. The reason why you say you don't hear it from other people is because maybe they don't have the passion or the knowledge or the interest, but I'm telling you, it will change the game. And it has for our business. I was asked to simply get up here and give you some simple facts, but the idea that a business has grown 20% in your community, simply because it took those resources and put them to use, that's something to realize. Those are new jobs, those are new dollars to our community, and I'm proud to be able to stand up here and say that we've done that. But it started with a conversation with Timothy Knight, Digital 395, and strategic planning on how that was going to play into what our future looked like. And I'm very proud to say that's what the future looks like. I'll turn it back over to the committee. Thank you for giving me the opportunity just to share our story and, and where it's kind of going. And go read the book, because the idea that broadband hubs are the only place people live, it's a great book by the way, too.
Our next speaker is Justin O'Neil. He's going to talk about broadband impact, benefit to education, and then he's going to talk about the millennials and their perspective on broadband.
I'm here once again to offer the millennial perspective on, on an issue. So I'll start with the Retention, Recruitment, Recreation Subcommittee that was started on BASE, because I think a lot of great information has come out of there relating to, you know, the 86% of the economy that the BASE makes up. We began by trying to identify the gap that we recognize in the community, of millennial participation, participation in our businesses, participation in local government, being part of the community and calling this place home. And so where we started was, was putting together surveys and then a facilitated conversation, which resulted in the Millennial Focus Group Report, which I think was included in the agenda packet for this meeting, and we've referred to before. And there was a question there about internet access. 95.5% of those polled gave internet issues a seven to 10 as being extremely important on a scale of one to 10. This is of the utmost importance to millennials because they communicate with their entire world via the internet. And what that means is not just, you know, we were talking about at the last meeting, communications between one another, but it also relates to how they communicate with their community, with their businesses. They're interested in hearing the stories of the businesses they want to frequent. They're interested in, in understanding what's going on, and their way of doing that is engaging online. It's a real quality of life issue, and when a millennial looks at a community, they look to whether or not it can support the lifestyle that they're accustomed to. And so it becomes a recruitment retention issue for our community. And I, I don't believe I'm the only one who's going to speak about that today, so I'll leave some of those, those facts to them, but it's incredibly important that they are able to communicate with our businesses, that they're able to communicate with one another. And as more subscribers come on to that network, they're going to use it for all the applications that, that they've grown accustomed to, most primarily, that'll be streaming video and streaming data, which is a huge bandwidth suck. The Pew Research Institute has shown again and again, and I can provide this report, it's referenced in the Millennial Focus Group Report, that this, as Eric said, is only going to grow exponentially year to year. So we cannot build a network that satisfies today, and we shouldn't build a network that satisfies even three years from now. As Dr. Ferguson pointed out, the theoretical capacity of Digital 395 is so immense that it's meant to last, I believe the, the number that they were using when they were advocating for the project starting off was, it was supposed to last for 100 years. That's the theoretical, theoretical capacity of that middle mile backbone that we uniquely have access to as a community. So building out that last mile and making that enormous capacity available to both residences and businesses puts our community ahead in terms of, of the opportunities that our, our locals can take advantage of. And that's, that's going to become critical, because we're talking about branding this community as a high-tech community, we're talking about taking advantage, as Beth pointed out, we have this very intelligent, high-tech population that works on BASE. This is a resource they look to. This is the utility that, that this generation is responsible for building out. So as far as millennials are concerned, and I, I won't go over everything that, that's already been discussed by Eric and by Beth, but the applications that businesses can begin to use and get more involvement, more patronage from millennials, it's, it's more than what we've discussed. We've talked about social media, we've talked about those lines of communication, but, you know, Beth brought up a bunch that I hadn't heard, talked about in this room before. Streaming video, so tremendous savings costs for, for training. Millennials are looking for that kind of communication in their community. They're looking for a nervous system that is entirely online with which to participate. And what that looks like is things like Wi-Fi in our parks, so that they can get out and they can mingle, and they can, they can be part of the community, but that they don't lose their connection to how they communicate with the world. So that's something to consider, especially when our BASE is saying they're hiring on 400 new millennials. We want them to stay here, we want them to call this place home, we want the brand of Ridgecrest to be attractive to both businesses and the workforce coming in to set up shop here and start their families here. And this is, this is, 95% say that this is a critical issue for them. So I'd encourage you to do it.
Now we'll go to the next slide. We're on funding, funding opportunities. Earl, could you come up and discuss Healthways and the California Accountable Communities for Health?
Yeah, just in terms of funding opportunities, let me just hit a couple of things. You know, the hospital, I've been very involved with Healthways and what's called a Blue Zones Project. That was, that's a way to transform communities into really healthy communities, and we're, in many ways, we're already a very healthy community. We're building bicycle paths and so on and so forth. But the National Geographic sent some people to five different communities throughout the world about, in 2000. And what, they went to those communities that had people that lived 10 years longer than other people in the surrounding communities, and they investigated those communities, and they found that it had to do with diet, exercise, social, you know, how they worked together socially and a lot of other things. And so they replicated, they, they took the lessons from that, they replicated it first in many, in Minnesota, in several, several communities in Minnesota, then they've done some more Blue Zone communities in Southern California. And now, many other, many other Blue Zone communities are being implemented. And what's interesting is, the investment that you get, that you have to give to build this Blue Zone community usually returns tenfold what you invest in the, in this. And in addition, Healthways gives you all the information about how to put this together, they help you put it together, they help you get grant funding and so on and so forth. So the hospital is willing to push this, but we have to have community support to do that, and we've discussed that with, with some of you already. We're also applying for a California Accountable Communities for Health grant, which will give us again, almost a million dollars over three years to start transfer, helping to transform the community. There are other, there are other different things that can be used for, for, for funding, and I'm not going to go through all, revenue bonds. The DOD also has funds for improving quality of life for military families. So, so there are all kinds of funding opportunities that we can develop that will help us with a lot of these, these issues. That's all I'm going to say, and let the education folks here, if they're still here.
Just another to add about funding opportunities. Having a conversation with incumbent service providers might be an opportunity to how they could play into the game. Looking at infrastructure planning and assets and collaborating on granting right-of-ways, utilizing utility poles, utilizing unused pipes and conduits, trenching and installation methods. The committee also considered assessment districts, and we also considered approaching property taxes, but those two items we knew would be dead on arrival, so we weren't recommending them. I jumped the gun here and went to funding, and Justin Swanta has some to talk about education, and he has some speakers to talk about education before we go to the next slide.
Real quick to report on the meeting, because they weren't able to come. I met with Superintendent Ernie Bell of Sierra Sands and the IT Director for Sierra Sands, Donnie Morrison. I met with them today, they weren't able to be here, but they did give me permission, permission to give their, their full-throated support for whatever the council decides. They want to work closely with that decision. Education has become, so many applications, I should say, for technology in the classroom as well as technology at home to advance education. That's become the standard. And a couple of the speakers that we invited from the educational community here are going to speak to that effect. So first, I'd like Mike Campbell to come up, IT Director for Saracosa, going to speak about what, what issues they're going through, where the gaps, barriers are, and opportunities are to enhance education in our community.
Good evening. My presentation's going to be about limitations, opportunities, and challenges. Five years ago, when I came here to became the IT Director for Saracosa, we had a 5-meg microwave link to provide internet connectivity. This was very limiting in what we could deliver via the web and online, and it was also very problematic and unreliable on windy days. Every time the wind blow, we'd lose our connectivity. We were very limited in what we could offer online as far as instruction. Most of our instruction was text-based, we couldn't do interactive or multimedia-rich presentations, and our faculty had very limited connectivity or availability of resources such as internet to, to expand and stay current with their knowledge base. In 2012, Saracosa purchased a 20-meg fiber connection from AT&amp;T. This opened up great opportunities for us to expand both our online stuff and in our availability of classes using ITV to our remote sites. That gave us greater capability there. Then in 2014, when the Digital 395 circuit came to Ridgecrest and the 395 quarter, we purchased 100 meg circuit to, for the college, with plans that we're going to increase to either 500 meg or gigabit this coming fall. So with this, now our students have greater opportunity to take online classes that are multimedia-rich, that have lots of interactive content to them, but the challenge we face now with this is, our students need to be able to access these classes and resources from their homes. We have great network capabilities up at the college, but literally nobody can get to us. We need to, we need to increase the services in our communities to, so that students can take the online classes and transfer to the USC's and never leave home for the first two years, at a greatly significant savings to them. Some of the other challenges that we face is that we have a very hard time recruiting and retaining qualified faculty and staff to Ridgecrest. And some of the challenges, I mean, we have great schools here, good businesses, but the one thing they're looking for is access to high-speed internet. High-speed internet is no longer a luxury, it's a necessity. In order to, in order for Saracosa to continue to grow and be successful, we need our communities to have access to high-speed internet. Thank you.
To give a perspective of what it looks like to be a student in this community needing those resources, we, we invited two high school students, Kim McGrew and Brianna Davis, if you guys will come up. These two students are also part of Youth Advisory Committee. I asked them to come here to try to give an impression of, there's, there's technology saturation in the classroom, but they go home not only with homework assignments, but with a tremendous amount of other research or opportunities they have to look for. So I wanted them to tell the story of what's it look like at home for them, and why is broadband such a critical need.
Good evening. Like Justin said, we wanted to give a student aspect. We wanted to give a student's point of view from this situation. So for me personally, six of the seven of my academic classes are based mostly online with assignments and turning in things. They all require internet access, and it would be difficult to be able to really get the full, sorry. What I'm trying to say basically is, all of my classes require a lot of internet access, and it'd be difficult to continue keeping up with my classes without a sufficient internet access. All of my classes are slowly becoming more technologically based, so it means that I need to be able to access internet in order to continue keeping up with my schoolwork and keeping my teachers happy, basically.
Good evening. My name is Brianna Davis. I'm a senior at Burrows High School. So like Kimin said, a lot of our classes are very tech-based. I am in more advanced classes, so as of right now, they are not completely up to date with the applications that are available to us. However, I'm sure that that will not be the case in a few years. However, even though I do not use personally these applications that require high-speed internet so much through Burrows High School, I do require it when I go home. I can't think of a day ever, well, in the past few years at least, when I have gone home and not needed to use high-speed internet, either to do research for an essay or an application to a college, or an application for a scholarship, or videos to help myself understand the concepts that I'm learning in classes. Basically, what I'm trying to convey is that it is extremely necessary for students, millennials, my age, Kimin's age, to have this internet access so that we can be successful as we go on into the world, as we go to college, as we decide to come back here when, you know, we have awesome internet fiber stuff because we want to come back, wink, wink. So I think it is absolutely necessary for us to, to maintain or create a system that is as valuable and just amazing as one that is being offered here. I think it will be beneficial to the whole community, especially the people who will one day run it, which are the millennials. So, thank you.
Just to put a cap on that, talking with Superintendent Bell today, he alluded to the fact that in the next few years, they do plan to have assigned devices to students, going home with them with all their, their books, their assignments, a way to interact with their teacher from home. This is the future of education. This is the future of education since being done in other communities, but it makes it absolutely essential that they have a high-speed connection at home. And this isn't just sending email, which you might be able to get away with with a few megs down. This is streaming content, videos, lecture series that they can access. The concept of the flip classroom is starting to be implemented, which basically means they take care of all their lecture and reading upfront, which means the data needs to get to them at home, and then they go in the classroom to do their homework and work with the teacher. As we see this take root, all of that demand is going to be put into the home, and I would, just to paint the picture a little more vividly, I and one other person was living in a house with 15 devices connected to a network, and we were usually in sync about how we were using it, streaming Netflix or something like that. If you have four students all at different grade levels in the same house, plus parents, the amount of bandwidth that you need in order for everyone to be streaming or pulling large packages of data is going to be very large. And that's why we cannot build for today. We need to build for, really, what's matched the capacity of Digital 395. Let's build it 100 years out, a fiber network to every home and business, so that as it's needed, more can be adopted off of the infrastructure that we've invested in. Thank you.
We looked at a municipality or the private sector. A municipality, the city installs a network, the city owns a network, and you put out a request for a proposal for service providers, which is a very competitive approach. Fees from the service providers can provide for paying off a revenue bond or loans or other sources of funding that you have to pay back, fees to the CBC for the connectivity management of the backbone, and support city network operations, maintenance, and upgrades, which can be outsourced. The private sector, they install the fiber network, they own the network, and they do everything that they're doing now. You wouldn't see much different, other than the access to a gigabyte. Other cities, communities that upgraded to broadband infrastructures, Mammoth Lakes, their incumbent service provider is putting in fiber network, the service provider is Sutton Link. Sandy Oregon, a population of 10,000, is doing a municipal approach with the use of a revenue bond. Santa Monica, California, they're getting their revenue from savings by terminating their access to private lines. And then Glasgow, Kentucky, using a revenue bond. These are just examples to show you. California communities around in our region that are getting a broadband infrastructure, Boron, Ransburg, Johannesburg, Crowley Lake, Stallion Springs up in the Tehachapi area, Mammoth Lakes, as I mentioned, and Ridgecrest. So, I'd like to present a video of what Sandy Oregon did before we go into a cost analysis. So if the IT person can go to the video.
A small Oregon city between Mount Hood and Portland built its own gigabit fiber network. This is a lesson in local self-reliance and what a determined community can do.
We have two tiers, 100 megs for $39.95 a month and a gig for $59.95 with no contracts, no bandwidth caps, you know? Here it is, and oh, by the way, that's up and down, and there's no gotchas on it.
The Chamber of Commerce has been very supportive of SandyNet and particularly with the fiber.
I think they can actually see how it can benefit all the businesses.
SandyNet came, they came and they talked to us, and they gave us a deal we couldn't refuse.
Coming out here and getting on SandyNet and upgrading to the fiber and realizing the cost is half of what I was paying was a great surprise, for sure.
So it really began out of a need. The story we always tell is we couldn't get a DSL line at City Hall, and this was back in 2001. So we literally called the phone company at the time and said, "We want broadband," and they said, "Sorry, we don't have it." So the mindset was, well, if that's what they're telling the city government, what are they telling our residents, and what are we going to do about this problem? We had just done our first wireless deployment, it worked really well, and City Council gave us the direction of deploy that citywide. So over the course of the next four or five years, we built a wireless system that covered the entirety of Sandy as well as some of the outlying areas, and just were adding customers as fast as we could sign them up.
The demands on the internet were just too great, and the decision was made to upgrade to a fiber optic network.
We're using the fiber in a lot of other ways to drive economic development. We have a perfect example here recently of a five-building complex where a company has five different buildings throughout town and in our industrial park, and we're able to provide them a very cheap quote for bringing in their own connected network throughout town.
Really fast. I think at that time, it was 100 megabit per second connection for probably an eighth of the cost of what we were getting. So we were going to get 10 times faster than what we could have gotten before for a fraction of the cost. It's a no-brainer. It was a win for us.
Being in real estate, I encounter a lot of people that have very specific internet needs, people that do work from home primarily, and in the outskirts of Sandy where internet is not as available, that's a big concern for a lot of people, and some people even choose to live closer to town because of it.
We've got five municipally-owned buildings throughout the city for the various departments, and we saw a huge benefit to being able to connect those with our own institutional network and have fiber connectivity directly between each. There's nothing like the reliability of fiber. In fact, that particular line's been in service for almost eight years now without a single outage. This fiber just never goes down. Once we had all the city buildings connected with fiber, we immediately realized savings of, in the phone system costs, we were able to deploy a new phone system institutionally. It also enabled better communication within the sites, so we've got better utilization of staff resources.
We hooked up a way for our officers to appear via video streaming service to the grand jury in Oregon City.
Tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Our officers now come locally here to our police station. They're told what time to appear, they appear, testify, and then they're finished typically in less than an hour. So it saves us fuel costs, it saves us time.
Our highway that goes right through the center of town is owned by ODOT, the Oregon Department of Transportation, because it's a state highway, Highway 26. As it's going through town, all the lights, the traffic lights are owned by them, but none of them are connected. The lights aren't timed through the highway, and we have a lot of lights. We went and met with them and said, "Hey, we have a conduit system. We put in the conduit up to all your traffic lights, and we would like to give that to you." They'll be able to monitor those from their main central command center down in Portland, and if they need to change something, they don't have to drive out here 30 miles and work on it, drive back and realize it didn't work. They can just do that in real-time. This is a livability issue for us.
I think that one benefit from having it, and I would say this is a major benefit, of having your network owned by the citizens of the city of Sandy, is that your governing board, your city council, is the board of that service as well. You may run into someone on the governing board at the grocery store, they may live down the street from you.
We did an extensive amount of forecasting and figuring out, you know, where the budgets were going to lie for the next five, 10, 15, 20 years before we made that decision to go out for a $7.5 million revenue bond, because, you know, for me, I'm just a normal guy. I don't make a lot of money, and to borrow something with that many zeros on the end of it was very intimidating. It's been an adjustment to sign these huge invoices for construction and, you know, put my name on a million-dollar invoice or million-dollar-plus invoices, as we've seen these construction bills come through over the past seven months.
We did not use taxpayers' dollars because we didn't feel it was right for everyone to have to pay for something that maybe not everyone's going to participate in. We looked at it as we could pay for it through revenue generated through use.
You know, at the end of the day, I have confidence in the numbers. I have confidence that the take rate that we're seeing is exceeding what we actually modeled for. So we're pretty comfortable that this is going to be a financially viable project, and we'll be able to cover those debt services costs over the course of the 20 years.
The fiber for us is not the end game, it's just now that we can start the race.
It's just really cool. So I enjoy being able to be a part of something that, it's like I tell, you know, my team at SandyNet, we're developing something here that's going to impact this city for the next 30, 40, 50 years, maybe even into the next century. This really is kind of like the power grid was in the early 1900s. We're changing the way that this community is going to interact with the outside world and within the community itself. So there's just something satisfying about being able to build something that, at the end of the day, is going to impact people for generations.
You can go ahead and stop the video and go back to the slideshow, please. Would you return to the slide that starts with a cost benefit? Next one? Okay, I can do that. Okay, Bill Sumner's is going to describe the cost analysis that he did and recommendations.
Good evening. I know you guys are all excited about this, right? And you're going to yourself, "Holy Kioli, we already got internet in Ridgecrest," right? Well, we did a study, and the study said, "Yeah, we've got internet, but our average bandwidth is 10 meg." Do you think we can do and take ourselves to the century city with 10 meg? No, we can't. So, we did a benefit-cost analysis, and so what I want to do for you guys is to tell you, in all of your excitement up there, is that we can do this. I'm going to stand here and I'm going to tell you how you can do it. It's already been done, it's not rocket science, there's so many models out there and tools that we can use, and I want to help, we want to help, the community go to the next step. And do you guys want to do that?
Yes.
I think you do, and I think we can't afford not to. So I'm going to, I don't need to read the definition of what a cost-benefit analysis is, but I'm going to surprise you with some very interesting numbers. Next slide. So, when we start talking about cost, your eyes are going to roll back in your head and you're going to go, "Holy cow, how can we afford to do this?" Well, frankly, we can't afford not to do it. So when we start looking at this, we start looking at a development plan in the next three months to work together and create a plan of how to take this to the next step. And then in the next 30 days during that three months, so it's not four months, it's three months with the 30 days inside here, is talking about how do we socialize this to the community? How does the community jump on board here and help us take this to the finish line and make us a century city in Ridgecrest? So as we start looking at this, we want to say, okay, what's the opportunities here? The opportunities are that there's pay-forward methodology that says, "Hey, I want to pay for a year in advance of my internet provider, and then we'll pay you back, we'll give you a year and a half." There's just all those kinds of options. And I don't want to go through all of those tonight because we're all getting tired and hungry, but all I'm saying is this committee has those options for you, and we're here to help you to find out all of those and review them and work through them. You know, we have ISPs, we have internet service providers in Ridgecrest. None of them have fiber. Some of them have fiber that are coming into them from Verizon, for instance, that they're paying $1,900 a month for. And those kind of internet providers don't have the infrastructure to give fiber to the household. Our goal is to give fiber to the household and every business and every roof inside Ridgecrest, and the outside as well. I asked our county supervisor to come because I think there's a partnership opportunity here for the city and the county to come up with an East Kern County infrastructure for broadband, and those are the kind of details that we need to work through. So as we start this and we say, "Okay, what is our first step?" The first step is we create a free Wi-Fi network across Ridgecrest. And you go, "Holy cow, how much is that going to cost?" Well, I think you'll be surprised once you see what the numbers come up to be. But if you give free Wi-Fi across all of Ridgecrest to the limit of one megabit, that's enough to do email and some browsing on, and then you use the model as hotels and airplanes use, to where you log on and I want more bandwidth, I can get 100 meg over Wi-Fi typically if you put in the new high-tech systems today. I can get 100 meg, and I'm going to hit my credit card and I'm going to bill it right there for $59, and I want it for the next 30 days, 100 meg. There's your seed money to start getting you started. Once you start developing that Wi-Fi network and then start the request for proposals with the contractors and all of those types of infrastructure kind of things that you're going to have to go through. So when I started, we started doing the calculations. Next slide, this is going to start giving you some numbers, and you're going to get all excited about this, but it's okay. We've got time. So, if you talk about the monthly connection for the CBC or Digital 395, how we used to all call it, it's basically $7,000 a month for one gig. However, under the grant that was given to the CBC to put together Digital 395, because you're a government entity, you get certain subsidies. I'm not totally clear on how much those subsidies are, but they're significant. So you probably wouldn't pay $7,000 a gig, you'd probably pay somewhat less than that, and I don't have the numbers yet, but we're working on that. So the installation cost, so you heard Sandy talk about, they wrote a check for $7.5 million to put in infrastructure. That was for 10,000 roofs. That wasn't 10,000 people, that was 10,000 roofs. Ridgecrest has 14,000 roofs or domed styles that people live in that we would want to take networks to. So we decided that let's just take this to be total pessimistic. So we're going to say it costs 25 million. So we tripled that number to go to 14,000 roofs instead of 10. Okay? So if you take that number, and as you follow along here with me, what we did was we took 60%, we took, I'm sorry, we took 50% of the total subscribers that we figure we would want to do, which is if you take 14,000, you take 60%, you got 8,400. So we said to ourself, "Let's just cut that in half and make it 4,000," so we can make it even more feasible, so if we don't get that many subscribers, we're really taking it on the downward side. So we're really being pessimistic here. So if you take the 4,000 subscribers and you say it's 60 bucks a month, your revenue stream per month is $240,000 a month. Okay? You say to yourself, "Okay, 240,000." So what if I did take the 8,400 that really is 60%? And oh, by the way, Sandy is now at 70% instead of 60%. If you take the 8,400 people that subscribes just at 60 bucks, you have $540,000 of revenue stream a month. So let's just, what is that over 12 months? If you only take the 4,000, it's $2,800,080 per year. Your return on investment is about 10 years on 25 million. If you take the 8,400, which I think is much more realistic... If you take the 8,400, which I think is much more realistic, it's $6 million a year. Your return on investment is five years. I mean, those are basic economic figures that you can't argue about. 20, yeah, just relax. I'm trying to get you.
We should have some expenses in there.
You would, but this is just to give you the big picture, right? So, I just want to give you one more number here and that is over 20 years, if you only sign up 4,000 people, it's $57 million. If you sign up the 8,400 people, it's $120 million over 20 years. It's a hell of a return on your investment. You frankly can't do this. And if you go to the next slide, we just took it, I took it to the next level and the numbers even get bigger and bigger and bigger. And you guys can read those on your own. I don't need to go through that for you. But, the bottom line is your return on investment, if you kicked it up to 75 bucks a month and you signed up 5,000 subscribers, your return on investment is five years at 25 million. And that's if you've got a bond and then of course you're going to have to pay interest and all that kind of things on it too. But meanwhile, you're generating income if you can take some TAB funds, start the wireless network, start your infrastructure, start your request for proposal with contractors and you guys become, the city becomes its own utility, just like happened for the power company way back when. So, now I want to just talk to you about a little bit of what's in it for me. Okay? What's the whiff 'em? What is in it for me? So, currently today, and I just did this, I turned my Verizon phone service off and now I'm on internet phone service. It went from $72 to $9.95. My cable, my internet, my satellite was 120 bucks. That's all gone to 75. This isn't a hypothetical situation basically, but it's pretty real. The internet, I was paying 70 for. So, my total is $262 a month and I saved $177.05 as an individual. That's not a business, that's an individual going to 100 meg. Pretty significant. So, all the community can look at this and go, "Okay, that's what's in it for me." So, the recommendations for this, and I'm going to try to get you out of here by 10:30, is that the city council engages. And from the looks on your face, I read people pretty well, it looks like you want to engage. And I think this is a very, very important thing. So, what we'd like to do is direct city staff to work with the city council, the broadband committee and the public to develop and implement a broadband policy over the next three months. We've taken the liberty to prepare one of those policies for you as a draft and we've included that into your documentation. And I know you guys get more reading than you want. I'm sure you're not prepared to even talk about it tonight and I don't want to. But, I'd like to ask you over the next few weeks to digest this policy and see if it's something that you want to sign up for. Mono County followed this policy similar to this and is now going down this road. Mono and Inyo County. So, that's what we're asking is to look that policy over and adopt this policy. The draft is completed as is in your documents. We'd like, once the council signs up for this and we start going down the road, we're going to ask for reviews of what the status is at the city council meetings once a month. We'd like to have those. We need to identify a general manager to spearhead this and that's going to take infrastructure and money. And we understand there's some TAB funds that may just fit into this perfectly. Would be worth looking at and we have some recommendations down the road. So, we're asking for a general plan change, implement a one-dig policy. So, whenever you issue a permit for a dig, we put in empty conduit, geolocate each end and keep a map and have the city maintain that map. We're also asking the city to engage in the broadband committee with us as the experts to find a project manager to spearhead this. And I don't know if you can find a volunteer to do that or not, probably not. Assign an IT person from the city to work along with the communication and the broadband Work with the planning commission and the infrastructure committee to assist the implementation plan. So, develop that three-month plan with the communication and technology committee. Additional recommendations is to draft an RFP to go out to contractors and looking for methodologies and pricing to, and put together a plan on where they would trench. There's technologies out there for micro trenching and small boring so we wouldn't tear up the streets. Prepare a cost matrix and performance criteria for that RFP. We'd like to participate in that. Decide whether or not you want to be a municipality to do this your own, on your own, under the city or if you want to just contract it out. And the good news about contracting it out is there's a huge return on their investment and they get the profits and the city doesn't. So, that's the easy way out in my opinion. You could transfer some TAB funds to help pay for that RFP development and the contractors. So, our goal, goals are plan for a development of Ridgecrest to be a gigabit community. And I don't think anybody in this room can argue the fact that we can't, we should not do that. The second goal is to provide development standards to ensure the development and implementation with minimal impact on the visual and natural resources. So, don't tear up the new streets that we just paid Measure L for and make it so you don't even know that you're there. And that technology exists, by the way. And the third goal is to seek cost-effective, efficient and reliable solutions with the support of the community. I assume you all got the documentation that had all of the broadband surveys and all of that documentation. I'm going to let Jay explain a little bit about that. But, we welcome your inputs with us as the committee and vice versa. So, if you have any questions, you got any questions for me before I sit down? Okay, I did my job. Thank you very much.
Jay, the documents that we are available that we're sharing with the city staff and the council, of course, is the presentation, our presentation. We did a survey, the committee put together survey questions. We went out on Survey Monkey and Justin did a report. So, that report is available to you. Justin also authored Broadband Community Strategy. It encompasses strategy together with the government, city government, educators, businesses and the general public. As Bill mentioned, there's a draft, Ridgecrest Gigabit Broadband Policy and also in the packet is Justin's Millennial Focus Group Report. Okay. All right, white fiber, technically it's efficient for digital switching and other It's widely accepted industry-wide. It's almost unlimited capacity. It's scalable, it's reliable, less expensive to expand. Telecoms are interested in maximizing the revenue. They're not interested in optimizing broadband in rural areas and small cities that want to stimulate their economic development. Telecoms don't believe that rural areas need more broadband except for entertainment. We do not recommend building a network on the current network that could accommodate just 10 to maybe 100 megabits. We advocate for networking fiber to every house and business. With that said, we are not saying that everyone has to sign up for gigabyte service in the network. 500 megabits and less can be offered and prices should be a result of the business model formulated in the broadband business plan. Broadband is relevant for the entire community. Can provide world-class, reasonably priced, high-capacity internet service access where you live, work and play. Provides opportunities for all to thrive, for all generational groups, businesses and residences. It's time for the city to engage. The Technology Subcommittee is not an official representative of the city. Our city officials should conduct the broadband conversations with other city officials, officers and managers of broadband businesses. I encourage you to talk with representatives from Sandy, Oregon, Mammoth Lakes, even Tatchapi. At this point, city officials, not the Subcommittee, should conduct further analysis and actions and decisions and coordinate with Kern County to factor in the residences that live in the county. Real quick, I've got, we did some results of our survey. The businesses, this is a result of businesses that could use broadband to diversify their business or grow their business, over 50 percent. In order to make initial fiber connection, some of the, this is a response from businesses that would partner with other businesses to connect to broadband. This is a result showing that the number of residences that have internet. This shows how much capacity the residence has. 50 percent, less than a third have one to three megabits. The rest all depends on how close they are to the POP or how much they're paying for versus how much they're actually getting. This question we asked, should the city of Ridgecrest make broadband a priority issue? Okay. No questions?
I have questions.
Okay.
I'm the question girl, I can't help myself. Talk about becoming a gigabit city, but in your research, did you come across smart cities?
Smart cities?
Mm-hmm.
What's your definition of smart cities? I'm not familiar with that.
Okay. Smart cities basically takes the technology and what we're talking about and uses it within the community in order to enhance the community. We have Smart Riverside. There was actually a convention in DC this summer regarding smart cities, the money available, there's grants, there's other things. I've been very, very involved with broadband and I actually brought forward doing this three years ago with the city, putting in the conduit, doing everything you're suggesting. So, I'm a huge supporter. I just didn't know where all you guys had gone. I mean, I see the report. I just didn't know how far you had gotten in what you looked at.
Smart city is something we have not looked at.
Okay. We can talk about it, just not right here, but I'd be glad to talk with you because there's some stuff we can incorporate there that I think would be very, very beneficial. So, and I'm familiar with the policies because I was on the consortium, helped write them for Inyo and Mono Counties. So, I'm excited about that going forward as well.
I think this is a very exciting opportunity. I've been, you know, listening to Justin's report on the millennials, honestly, I thought you were overselling it to begin with. Then I went out and talked to a lot of people about this, particularly the 20-somethings that I work with and I didn't get a single negative response, not a single one. And every single person said, "Yeah, as long as the price is, you know, no more than $10, more expensive than what I'm paying right now, I'd be all for it." And I, you know, said, "Well, does it bother you that it be a city-owned thing?" And, you know, and we had some discussion about that. And so, I kind of want to bring some of those, that discussion to you as well. Is, why are not, let me rephrase this. Why aren't the private ISP, internet service providers, doing this already?
You kind of answered that already, but I want to talk about it more.
The committee feels Ridgecrest is being ignored. We feel that the service providers, MediaCom, Verizon, before they sold to Frontier, were more interested in the big cities, the more high-density populated areas. I think that was where their biggest bang for the buck was, you know, to help their bottom line. And that's just Jay Chun's opinion.
So, from your perspective, you don't see our local internet service providers jumping on board with this at all?
We don't know. Justin has talked with MediaCom, so I'll let him jump in and discuss, have him, let him discuss his conversation with MediaCom.
I'll let Justin in, but just to answer your question frankly, is that the MediaComs and the Verizons of the world don't see the return on their investment for digging the holes, getting the easements, getting the proper permitting and all that kind of stuff. They're banking on all of their technology to be over copper when they're doing frequency modulation over copper and they feel that they can get all the 150 megabit that they need and that's all anybody's ever going to need. So, they're not looking into the future like we are. The future is fiber and fiber to the household is where it's at. And frankly, they don't want to make the investment. So, and we've already talked to all of them and that's the bottom line. They don't want to make the investment.
It's really the initial capital investment that they don't want to make.
Right, because they can't get bonds and special grants like a community like Ridgecrest can. I mean, there's so many funding opportunities out there, it's not going to cost you much other than effort, frankly.
The only thing I'd add to that, and I have worked with MediaCom and the other incumbent providers for the last couple of years, trying to get more information out of them. For one, they're very tight-lipped about all this because if they expose anything to the competition, they could be overrun and all that. But, what I'd say is this is kind of the brave frontier when it comes to legality and regulation. And in my opinion, what I've seen representing East Kern, Mono and Inyo County as project manager for Eastern Sierra Connect, that, those delays and playing everything so close to the vest and the lack of regulation harms a community like ours the most because we don't have other funding options to go to. We're pushing and pushing and pushing our incumbents to take action. We also don't have the resources that some of the communities you saw like Johannesburg, Ransburg, Boron, they can go out because they're so un or underserved and we can't do that. So, what I'd say is in addition to what Bill contributed, the idea of self-reliance is huge here because we do not have a stick to wield anymore without franchise agreements in place. CPUC is our only go-to and that's a big organization in a big state handling a whole lot of problems in an area where the law is just being written for the first time. So, I think it would benefit us tremendously to form our own stick and carrot and figure out what we need as a community. And at this point, the providers, I am all for trying to not vilify and work with providers. I have been the only one in the room a lot of the time advocating for MediaCom. I think Frontier is looking to engage and do more in rural communities, but the delays are tremendous. And at the end of it, we still do not have a regulatory option against those providers. So, we are subject to whatever decisions they make, whatever their bottom line looks like. And that's, we need to get out of that situation and get in front of our own, you know, decide our own destiny, if you will.
Justin, don't run away real quick because I can answer another component of that because I sit on the roundtable for government, local governments with the California Emerging Technology Fund. So, I've been at these meetings and I forwarded you all a copy again of the 2015 report and we'll answer some of those questions. Yes, it's funding and it's, they don't want to spend the capital outlay. It's also not worth it for them for the monthly money. So, they're never going to do it unless forced. The CPUC has looked at making broadband the same as electric. It is going to be a regulated utility and stay that way across the board. So, we're better off getting in front of that because being the size that we are, we don't have, like what you said with Boron and stuff. So, if we don't jump out and do it, we're kind of stuck. But, the bottom line is it's financial. And I sat there and talked with AT&amp;T and had an argument. I mean, I couldn't even... an argument, I mean, I couldn't even get a tower up, and we finally did, but, and it's, it's all bottom-line dollars, they will never, ever spend the money, because they don't see it as worth it, so they say leave it to HughesNet or one of the other small companies to do, period.
And, just to add to that, and the reason it's so essential that government lead this charge, is that, that's exactly the language we need to start using. You know, internet is no longer a luxury, it's a necessity, it's a civil right, the UN calls it a human right. I mean, that, that's the direction this thing is going, and the reason it's so important that the government lead this charge, is that we're going to have to explain that, because in the course of even just this presentation, I've put this in front of people who don't believe that, who outright deny it, and people in positions that we do need to win over. So, government leading this in order to provide that, that spearhead, to try to educate the public and educate people on why this is so important, is more services, healthcare, education, everything turns online. Sorry, Mr. Thomas, I think I got you off.
It's okay, Justin, I was going to ask Councilman Sanders a quick question to his survey with the people that, seeing that they made us aware about, they're going to need to link up with the city in reference to staff. Did you get any questions to ask in reference to volunteer status, that we will need some people to volunteer, in reference to some of the positions that they were talking about?
You mean as, I'm not sure I understand your question.
Well, they may mention of some staff that will need to go on, that we could look for volunteers, is that not correct?
Yeah, basically.
And my question is, is, did you get any response, or did you ask, have the opportunity to ask any questions about, would someone be willing to volunteer?
No, no, we didn't, I didn't discuss that with him. Wasn't really on my mind at the, at the time.
Then, I guess, what, when you say volunteers, and what...
Well, what I'm talking about volunteers is, is this committee volunteering to help you find the staff positions it's going to take to spearhead this, this project. So you're going, basically what our thoughts are, is we need an IT person from the city that can provide input into, into those plannings and those plans, and a project manager, project engineer, systems engineer, kind of person, that can help pull all this stuff together and, and be the spearhead. And that's a funded position that's going to have to come out of the city. So, we're here as volunteers to help those people, and you as the council, but as far as getting this volunteer to, to spearhead this, I don't think so. It's going to be a big job.
Okay, so when you talk, people in this salary, do you basically have an ideal as to what that cost would look like, that would be upon the city?
No, but I, no, but I think, I think it's absolutely worth some set-down conversation.
Okay.
And that's the next steps that we need to do, is to have those kind of conversations about what kind of level of that person needs to be. Is it a city manager level kind of, kind of job? I don't know. Those kind of conversations need to come from you folks.
So, let me wrap, let me just make a few more comments here, and I'll, I'll quit talking. But I definitely connect with almost everything that was said here today. Business advantages, my wife started up a home business, and, you know, operating from home, she uses the internet a lot. I actually started up my own business on the side, all my clientele is completely outside of Ridgecrest. I've already had some very embarrassing moments, Skyping and the internet goes down, you know, horrible for business. And, the, let's see, we talked about the young engineers, education. My, my daughter's only in fifth grade, she's already being told, don't take any of your books home, we're providing all the books online. And I'm all for that, because, I mean, you should see the weight of her backpack, with all her books in there, and that's not healthy, but it's also a large draw on our, on our internet connection to access, you know, full textbooks of information, but that's fifth grade. She's already being asked to do that.
And my daughter's in 11th grade, she had to do a term, or do a essay last night, and our internet went down.
Right. Yeah. With, going back to the, the young engineers, I, the biggest, and I hear this almost weekly, the biggest complaint that I've been getting is, is not necessarily speed, but it's also reliability. So it's actually both of those. And I think, I think Ridgecrest is really suffering on both levels. And so that's, that's huge. I, I think this is very exciting. My original concern was, you know, we're competing with the private sector, I don't like that. But a lot of those concerns have been answered, and quite frankly, I think some, some competition in this arena, even if it comes from the city, is going to really help things.
Let me give you my experience with MediaCom. When I did my subdivision, I had to put all utilities in. MediaCom would not come into my subdivision. Now, I think the franchise agreement with City of Ridgecrest says they will serve every town, every house in the city, that they would not invest any money putting their, their product into my subdivision until they had customers, which meant I had to run two-inch conduit through the whole subdivision, so they'd have conduit to use once they got customers. And they told me flat out, corporate says, we're not going to invest any money in a new subdivision until we have customers in there. And then when I had two customers in there, they had to bag them. I don't, I don't have a problem with competing.
Does, does anybody have a problem here if we ask to begin? I know that's what you're asking us to do, and I, do I see any reticence in saying, one, it's not our job, two, it's going to cost too much, or three, we don't have time? Are any of those reasonable concerns?
No. If we don't go forward, it's not very smart.
Listen.
It's not for me, I think we should begin moving. Making some steps, progress, because I think everybody's pretty much happy with the, not happy with the services here.
My only, my only concern with beginning is, do we, I mean, it's going to require some staff positions, and how do we start funding those right now? I understand how that funding is going to come after it gets started and people start enrolling, but right now is what concerned me.
Not a lot left.
For infrastructure, I don't know that we could justify paying...
I think one thing we need to look at is, is there are grants available, we, you know, at least spend maybe some time applying for grants, and I understand there's people in town that are willing to do grant writing, and they get paid after we get the grant.
There's a lady who's been doing it for the school, for the EDC, and for the museum. She's been very successful, and I know many of us are very, very happy with her. I would like you to, I'm going to send, ask if, I'm going to send, I'm going to ask if we can send this to a committee. I realize, it sounds like we're putting it off, but we need somebody to be able to say, I'm ready to do, I'm willing to work, how can I help? And it has to come from the city, and we can make recommendations to our staff in their spare time, what they're going to do. I, I think we need to begin this, we can, we've talked about it, you guys, I counted up the hours that you guys have, all total, you've got about 800 hours of this, each one of you have done, and, and I, and not 800 hours each, but a total of 800 hours. I think it's about time we stand up and say thank you for the hard work, and begin to make some resolutions to seek answers, not just questions, answers. You've given us the beginning, we're going to need your help to go forward right now. So if you're all willing to volunteer another 80 or 90 hours each, we're here.
We're here to help you, without a doubt, I mean, we're all passionate about that, Peggy.
I know, that's why you've been meeting for all these months.
And, and we, we want to help you, and, and I'm not sure taking it to committee is, is the right answer, but, but it's, it is what it is.
It's too big to do it any other way.
We understand that, and we're here to help, so if we can draft something to get things moving, go find the funding, we'll work on that, and we'll do that for you.
Because I don't think we can tell staff, take it and do it.
It has to...
I don't, you've got, Dennis, I know we've discussed your time, you don't have a whole lot of time sitting around, do you? No.
Every day, I'm about six minutes behind.
Okay.
I'm just going to say this one time, keep this in mind, $190 million over 20 years, that's just all I'm going to say.
It's silly to ignore that. It is income that we badly need, that we can significantly use, and if we sit back and say, I could've, would've, should've, it's too late. So, how about the Org Committee?
I, I don't care where we put it, I just know that I want to be involved, I know where we can go for some of the grants and some of the funding, because I've already been involved for the past five years.
Well, you're on the Org Committee, are you not?
I am. I just want to get it moving as fast as possible.
Can we meet next week?
Can, can you meet with them next week?
We'll make it happen.
Good. Is there any other...
That's, that's next Wednesday at 5:00, we need to get that on the agenda.
Got it.
On the City Org, City Org.
Yeah, 5:00 PM, the 24th. Okay.
Do you have my email, so, she's listening, we'll make it happen.
Benny, I see you're up there.
I'm just going to stress, but, well, in the event that didn't seem like there was going to be support, I was going to have a few things to say and some analogies to throw out, but it sounds like everyone more or less is on board, if this needs to move forward, so I would just like to say, you know, I have spoken out about this, I think actually at the last city council meeting, you know, saying, a lot of the stuff that you guys just presented tonight, so if, if you are looking for another volunteer, yeah, I'd be happy to be part of that, especially, you know, lending a voice of, you know, a base employee, and the millennials that you're, you know, are partially being targeted by this, you know, as part of the retention that Ridgecrest needs to get with my particular demographic, you know, increasing that, you know, the retention, and also not just me, but, you know, these young people, you know, those high school girls that were in here earlier, and they're saying, you know, we want to come back, you know, this is definitely a way that we can help facilitate that, is, you know, one thing that I point out, you know, if, if we want to maintain the youth in this city, we need to provide them the opportunities economically, with job growth and development, and providing this fiber optic will certainly help that, and expand the horizons for more than just, you know, future base employees, but also other business opportunities in Ridgecrest as well. So definitely, let's exchange some contact information, and, yeah, thank you.
Wonderful. Any other comments?
Is it open to the public?
Of course. That's why Benny was there. Of course. Like, we need it.
You have to be a little more aggressive.
Yeah, I, I need to do what Stan does. Just real quick, I support all of this fully. It's because of one member in this committee that allowed us to finally have internet at our home, and that just happened two weeks ago. And it is MediaCom. I fought for five years to get service, where all my neighbors had service, but about six of us didn't, in a block. And one of your, one of your members here in this committee made that happen, after five years of, of trying. Now, here's what I want to say, I'm from the dinosaur generation, and I understand that, and that's okay, but I use the internet too. And we have a foundation here that helps severely injured service members all over the United States. All right? I work with the VAs all over the United States. We do training in post-traumatic stress. I have 10 new families a day that are looking for help in trauma and injury, and we coordinate that with the VAs across this nation. Ridgecrest, right here. That happens every day of the week, and I have not been able to meet the requirements in the area of training and Skype because of unreliable internet and low speeds. 10 new families across this nation a day. So think about that. I'm already pushing two terabytes, within two weeks, I've already come up to almost one terabyte, and this new 100 megabytes that I, that, that I have, thanks to one of the people here, and I can use more. So, I live 2,000 feet from the fiber optic trunk on College Heights Boulevard, I want fiber to my home. How can we make that happen? I'll pay for it. You tell me what to do. I am ready to sign up today, to make that happen, to serve our severely injured veterans, to provide training to our clinicians and the VA, right now. Ready to sign up. That's my comment.
Marvelous, thank you.
Mike, I have an eight-year-old grandbaby that's not happy with the service either. And I have a wife that has a business...
Is that a dinosaur joke?
Yeah, no, I have a wife that has a business and not satisfied either, so we, we are on board with you.
I fully support everything you're doing here, let's go, let's do it now.
Come to City Org next Wednesday, please, Mike.
I don't mean to push this along, but I turn into a pumpkin at 10.
Come to City Org next Wednesday at 5:00, please.
You turn into one at 9:30.
I turn into one at 9:30.
All right, so we've got an action on this item, let's go to committee reports, unless there is any other public comment, I don't want to cut it off. Okay, all right, committee reports, City Org and services, you, we are...
We meet next week.
Infrastructure.
Do you want to talk about it? I'll be in Kern Cog tomorrow.
I'll cover you tomorrow. Okay.
I think they're going to vote to change that for Fourth Thursday.
We're doing a special, yeah, we're doing a special meeting for the Fourth Thursday.
Yeah.
I don't know the date, but...
Ad hoc water, that's going to be on the 22nd?
Yes.
Harks and Rec.
Haven't met.
Ad hoc youth.
The youth presented to the Chamber of Commerce at their luncheon to find participants for both their career development program and their mentorship luncheon. Number two...
They did a good job.
Did they?
They did a great job.
Great. I'm glad, I hope you guys hear that on TV, you guys got...
They must've had 20 people sign up to help.
Yeah, they, they're really excited about what they're trying to do and establish themselves in the community. They also are planning a Balsam Street beautification project as their next community service project. The third thing is, they are planning an end-of-the-year party to close out their school year, and the fourth and last thing, they are developing a team-building program that will occur over summer for new, and continual, continually advocating for new leadership.
Perfect. Action Committee. You didn't meet, right?
No.
No, haven't met.
And same with the RSCB.
Okay. All right, other committee boards, reports, or commissions? Mr. Mauer.
Kern Cog tomorrow, I gave the report of last month's last meeting, so.
Okay.
I think that's all I've got. I think you volunteered me on another committee, but that's...
Yeah.
Blue Angels, is that what it is?
Yes.
That's for next year.
Yes.
So, no report on that, we haven't had a meeting yet.
Councilman Thomas, anything?
No. Is that our comments, council comments, or no?
No, this is committee reports.
Nothing, sorry.
Okay. All right, Jim? Thing, okay, the only thing I wanted to remind is that, oh Lord, my brain must've done, forget it, I don't know what is, I was going to report. Okay. City Managers' Report.
Yes, Madam Mayor and the members of the council, I wanted to report two things regarding the wastewater treatment facility. Number one is, just a clarification, if there was ever any misunderstanding, our consultant, I believe, on the 28th of January, conducted a workshop here in the council chambers, and apparently there was some indication in the community that the base may be a participant in this particular endeavor as far as moving forward with the new wastewater treatment facility, and the base is not a participant, they're in fact a customer of the wastewater treatment plant, and I just wanted to clarify that for anyone listening, the base, in fact, historically, that, at one time, the existing facility was a base facility, and then that was through an agreement, an operating agreement, the city actually took over the operation of the plant, and the base is working with us for any future needs of right-of-way and additional easements that may be required with the new plant. But again, I repeat, the base is not a participant in the project, in fact, they will be a customer or a user of the facility. And the other thing is, is along with the consultant, and John Bracken, our chief plant operator, I went to La Hotten last week, I met with the folks there, and the, they are very, so, we reviewed the project with them, we reviewed basically a shortened version of the presentation that our consultant had made, just to make them aware where we were with the project. had made, just to make them aware where we were with the project. They were very supportive of the project and told us the appropriate time for the application for the permitting would be after two things. One's after the environmental document has been completed, and number two, after the city council has made a site selection, because they wouldn't, obviously won't consider an application unless the site is specific. And that's all.
Okay. Mayor and council comments. Jim, how about you?
I'm excited that we're moving forward. I was sorry to hear about the passing of Mr. Birbaker, who was also my teacher, and my condolences out to Sherry. Other than that, no, there's other stuff I want to bring forward, but I'll discuss it another time. I'm tired. Good night.
Councilman Thomas.
I just wanted to invite the public as well as council to a Black History event that we're going to have on the 27th at 11:00 at 242 West Pan Amit. We're going to have three speakers, Doris Bruce, Cedric Knight, and Douglas Burns. And we're hoping that you come, because our theme is, "Did You Know?" And I wanted to throw a trivia question out there real quick. Does anyone know why the Statue of Liberty on her feet has chains? Why, on the Statue of Liberty, why are there chains tied to her feet?
Are you going to share with us?
You have to come on the 27th at 11:00. You led me right into that. So beautiful, Peggy, and I'm so glad that you did that. You have to come at 11:00 at the church, 242 West Pan Amit, for our Black History program. Thank you.
Councilman.
To remind everybody, the Inyo's Valley Economic Outlook Conference is next week, February 25th.
That was going to be mine. The second one, I want to remind everybody at 9:30 on Friday here, we're going to have a GSA meeting in City Hall, so please come and join us. And there's a denim and dinam, beep beep, denim and diamonds auction going to be held here at the city, at Kermit G Center, to raise money for the scholarship fund that last year gave out $68,000 in scholarships. So I encourage everyone to come. And, I'm sorry, it is the 27th. 27th at, I'm going to say 5:00, 6:00, something around that time. Okay. Anybody else? Oh, let's make a motion to adjourn.
Hit the gallop.
We're done. Thank you all. Thank you, thank you.
I turn.